Okay, welcome all to the Harwood Zoning Board of Appeals Public Hearing this night, Wednesday, November 28th, 2018. We're opening at 7:03, it looks like, at the Griffin Meeting Room here in Harwood Town Hall. We have one, two, three, four cases on tonight. We'll do them in order. Our clerk will read the cases in. We'll have the applicant present themselves. The board will ask questions, then we'll open it up to the public to make comments, and then we'll see where we go after that. This hearing is being recorded and will be put up on the Channel 18 YouTube website. So if anyone doesn't want to be recorded, they need to exit, I guess. I want to thank Jim Hilliard for chairing the last two meetings so my wife and I could spend a lovely three weeks in France. Thanks, Jim. Appreciate it. And I will ask the board members to introduce themselves, please.
Jim Hilliard.
Kathleen Muller.
Dave Ryer.
Al Donahue.
Mike Capoli.
Megan Mayhew.
And Shayla Delaney's secretary.
Okay, I'm going to ask clerk Mr. Hilliard to call the first case, please.
Case number 2018-30, continued from 10/31/18. John A. O'Leary and Megan O. O'Leary, trustees through their attorney, William Crowell, have applied for a special permit or any alternative of variance to create an accessory building with an apartment and a pre-existing, non-conforming detached garage. The applicant is pursuant to the Code of Town of Harwood, Section 325, Table 1, Use Regulations and Table 2, Area Regulations, as set forth in Mass. General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 6. Property is located at 33 Harborview Road, MAP 6, Parcel E5-8, in the RH1 zoning district. We have some correspondence. And I'm not going to read the correspondence, I'm just going to read who it's from and...
Point of order?
Yes.
If I can. Wanted to clarify, sorry to interrupt. Mr. Chairman, I'm Attorney William Crowell. I'm not representing the petitioner in this matter. There was some thought of that, but I have a conflict of interest in this case. So Attorney Zender is representing the petitioner. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Crowell.
Thank you. I'm going to read the correspondence, I'm going to read who it's from and the date, and it's all on this particular case. The first one is from Erin O'Sullivan, Eileen Sullivan, sorry. Date of 10/17/18. Next is from Mary Henry, received on October the 26th, 2018. Next is from Frank and Evelyn Guessing. There is October 24th, 2018. Attorneys Brodigan and Gardner, LLP, received on October 30th, 2018. And have they in fact...Shayla?
Check with the applicant.
Okay, yeah. The next correspondence is dated, it is not dated, but it is from Croke, C-R-O-K-E, James Croke. And yes, no date. Next one is from Edmund Darty, 6 Northern Avenue, dated November the 25th. And the next one is from the Town of Harwood, Kathleen Tenaglia, Senior Health Agent, and that is dated October the 4th. And we have the Lee Webster, trustee of the 18 Eastern Avenue Realty Trust, dated October the 16th. We have Ms. Larrink, 21 Eastern Ave. This letter in opposition is dated October the 28th. I believe that's all the correspondence we have.
The town planner?
Town planner, right here. Date of November the 27th, from Shauleen Greenall, town planner.
Board of Health?
I'm sorry?
We have one from the Board of Health?
He did mention that.
That was town planner?
Yes, okay.
All right.
And...
That is the correspondence.
One from Attorney... Attorney Brodigan?
He did mention that.
Mention that, okay. Okay, voting on this case are going to be Mr. Hilliard, Ms. Muller, me, Mr. Donahue, and Ms. Mayhew. Now, Mr. Capoli will participate in the discussion, but he will not actually vote on this particular case. If the applicants could, or applicant could introduce themselves, please.
I will. Mr. Ryer, my name is Ben Zender, and I'm here on behalf of Megan John O'Leary. Megan is sitting with me, and John is in the audience. And also with us is Christophe Chardier, who is the builder, who is here to answer any factual questions about the construction or the design of the accessory dwelling. This is an application for a special permit under 325-51H. As you're probably aware, accessory dwellings to single-family residential structures are permitted by special permit in this zoning district. The O'Learys would like to take an existing, and I assume that you've all seen the neighborhood and seen the structures in the neighborhood. It's a beautiful little neighborhood, I saw it today. I loved it. The property that exists right now that you've seen has a single-family dwelling on Harborview Road, but then the property is connected all the way through to Northern Avenue, and on Northern Avenue is an existing garage structure. The proposal is not to change the dimension or the height or the exterior of the garage structure, other than to change the window schedules on both sides. And you have in your packet a set of two elevations that show the existing and the proposed garage. And so the substance of the changes is to go from a single window on the side that faces Windermere Bluffs Road to, they're going to move one window and add three more windows. That's on the side that faces that five-foot stockade fence you saw along the side of the building. And then they're going to add some windows on the other side where there's an existing doorway coming out onto the existing driveway. So the proposal here is to create an accessory dwelling. You have also a set of interior plans prepared by Chardier, which shows the proposal, which is to create where the garage door is that faces Northern Avenue. When you come up, you see that really pretty garage door. They're going to put a wall about 10 feet in, and that area will be a storage area, so it can store their various items. And then the main part of the building will be a common area for living and using. And then the rear part will be a bedroom, a bathroom, a walk-in closet, and another closet. And then there's a circular staircase that goes up to the second floor above that living area, which is a storage area. So the property has already, they've already been to the Board of Health. They are required to remove one bedroom from their dwelling, so they meet the septic requirements of Title V and your local health regulations. As you went by, you probably saw some storage units, some dumpsters, and some construction activity. That construction activity actually is the work that's being done in the main house to redo their kitchen, remove that bedroom wall. They've undertaken no work in the garage at this point because they're not permitted to do that at this point. So if you thought they were working in advance of a permit, they're not, I can assure you. In order to obtain this permit, they have to satisfy the criteria of your bylaw, which really consists of two sections of bylaw. The first is the general permit granting criteria of 325-51. The conditions of approval, and I'll run through them very briefly. I'm not sure what your protocol is, Mr. Ryer. If you'd like me to go through this, I will. If not, I won't.
Well, let me help you out, and maybe we can expedite some more.
Yeah, thank you.
351H, I have an issue, because I don't think you're going to meet subsection 3G on the square footage to qualify.
Yeah, I believe that would apply to new construction. I would say that believe that this, because it's an existing non-conforming structure that already exists on the property, that we don't have to comply with the G requirement of the square footers lot requirement for conversion of the structure?
We have viewed this in the past as applying to any accessory apartment, not just new construction, which, so I think what you, my view is what you really need to look at...
Yep.
Okay, 325-14Q, an accessory building residential with bedrooms.
Bear with me one second.
325-14Q.
Yeah, I'll find it. They changed my entire presentation, I'm sure.
No, it's okay.
No, no, it's okay. Okay, it's up to you.
I want to hear your arguments, but I'd like you to focus on the provisions that I think...
Did you say 325-14Q?
14Q, accessory building residential with bedrooms.
Okay.
Okay. Basically, it says they're permitted subject to a special permit.
The special permit review criteria pursuant to 325-51.
Right, so that gets us back to...
That gets us back to 51. Okay, thank you very much.
So I think what I'd like you to do is address 325-51.
I'd be glad to.
A, conditions of approval.
I'd be glad to, thank you.
I think that's, I don't want to, you know, prejudice your presentation, but my view is that's what you need to do.
It simplifies my presentation, Mr. Ryer, thank you.
Convince the board of...
No, thank you, okay. Well, the first criteria, the board shall not approve any application except for a site plan, which this is not, unless it finds all the following conditions are met. The first is the use is developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. You've seen the neighborhood. This is not changing the density of the neighborhood. It's not changing the location of parking areas. It's only providing for an allowed use in the district. There are already, just for your information, the immediately adjoining property, 26 Windermere Bluffs Road, it has this exact same use, in the exact same type of construction, there's a garage affixed next door. And if I may approach, Mr. Ryer, I just have one copy for the board. It's a photograph of the property immediately adjacent, as well as, and I'll just circulate one copy each into the table, maybe pass them down to the book, as well as the field part of that property, which indicates that it's a multiple-house property. This is immediately next door. When you're looking at the house on Harborview Road, it's the house immediately to the left. Detached garage-type structure converted to an accessory residential apartment. Additionally, the property at 42 Hiawatha Road is also a separate structure that's converted to accessible residential use.
What number?
42 Hiawatha.
Just for clarification, this would be the accessory apartment?
That is actually the accessory.
Okay.
That is accessory to the house. It's immediately to the left of that, just off the left of the picture.
Okay.
And the house, the structure to the right of that picture is actually the applicant's property.
The applicant's property, yes.
So it will not adversely affect the neighborhood. There will be some level of increased use of the people within the accessory dwelling, but there's no change in the structure, the visual impact, views or vistas from anybody in the neighborhood. There's already an existing driveway next door, which would be used to accommodate this. So, specific site is an appropriate location for such a use, structure, or condition. The specific site, again, being within the zoning district, has already been determined by town meeting vote to be an appropriate zoning district for this use, which I would read to be that the site isn't an appropriate location from a zoning standpoint generally. Again, it's not changing the density of the neighborhood. It's already a somewhat dense neighborhood. The addition of a one-bedroom accessory dwelling is, I would believe, is not going in any perceptible way to increase traffic or congestion in the neighborhood. It's, you know, again, it's one bedroom, you know, one vehicle, maybe two vehicles, and there's adequate parking for that. There will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. There's adequate off-street parking. You've been out to the site, you've seen that alongside this garage structure, there's a shelter driveway that goes in with adequate space for, I would believe, two vehicles at least. Right now, there's a large dumpster there, so in that area. Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use. This includes provision of appropriate sewage treatment facilities, which provide for a denitrification when the permit granting authority deems such facilities necessary for protection, drinking water supply wells, ponds, or saltwater abeyments. I don't believe there's any public drinking water supply wells in the area. It's served by town water. It has an approved Title V septic system. They're removing a bedroom, so they're staying within their Title V nitrogen loading requirements. The saltwater abeyments, the sound is at the end of Eastern Avenue. I think it's roughly six or seven houses down, it's a significant distance away. There wouldn't be any impact of that area. And then, so it meets all those requirements. And those are the four subsections, Mr. Ryer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else you'd like to add before I open it up to the board?
No, just briefly. The O'Learys have owned this house for approximately seven years. They had another house in the neighborhood for another seven years before that. They're blessed to live here. Their parents are older, they're in failing health. This will give them the ability to house their parents. They have younger children, you know, teenage children who are going to be getting older and having their own children. This will give them the ability to have a separate usable dwelling, for whatever purpose they might want to use it for in the area. And again, going back to, I thought the town planner's memo was right on. There's been a stated need and statement by your town meeting voters who established your bylaw, which wants to increase the number of small dwelling units in the town, it wants to increase the range of choice of housing accommodations. I mean, this is certainly something that in identifying this zoning district as permitting this by special permit, really leaves it up to you to look at a particular site and say, is there something about this site that just doesn't work? And I don't think, after looking at the facts of this, and after looking at the neighborhood, looking at the construction with an existing structure with no change to the external indications of the structure, other than some window schedules, I don't think there's something about this particular accessory dwelling which is going to change the character of the neighborhood, other than the fact that it's a residential accessory apartment, which the townspeople voted should be in appropriate use in this zoning district. And so I think that it meets your requirements. And I hope you feel the same.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Hilliard?
I have no questions. I think your presentation was quite well done.
Thank you, Mr. Hilliard.
You answered all the questions I had as you were presenting.
Thank you.
Ms. Muller?
I just want to clarify that, be sure that we're all on the same page, that this is an accessory dwelling with an apartment.
It's an accessory dwelling unit. I'm not sure if it's classified as an apartment. Under your bylaw?
Yeah. That's, yes, that's what it is. It's an accessory dwelling with an apartment.
Okay.
In which case, we flip to 325-51H. Does pertain?
No, I don't think it is. I think it's an accessory building residential with bedrooms.
Well, that's where the question is.
To be an apartment, it would have to have...
Kitchen.
A kitchen and bathrooms, it's got the bathrooms.
It's got a bedroom, a bath, a sink, a dishwasher, a side-by-side refrigerator, a long counter, a pantry, and a label that says kitchen, living, dining. That's where I'm...
Okay, but did you read the Board of Health letter?
Which seemed to regard it as an apartment.
No, she said the opposite, because it does not have either an oven, stove, range top, or built-in microwave. If it had one of those things, that would be an apartment, and that would trigger them having to redo the septic.
I have...
It also wouldn't qualify under the bylaw.
Well, that's exactly why I'm asking the question. I have difficulty accepting it's something that's described on the plan as, says kitchen, living, dining, this counter. It shows a pantry, a sink, a dishwasher, and a side-by-side refrigerator. That's not a snacking area.
No stove?
No stove. So what are people going to do with the dishwasher and a side-by-side refrigerator?
And again, this is a matter of interpretation by your board, you know, followed by history of your building inspectors. I, you know, the towns that I primarily work in, what separates residential habitable area from a dwelling unit is the ability to cook. It's the stove. There are many houses where you have separate kitchens and other parts of the house where you keep snacks. You know, you may have something in the basement where you prepare food. You could have somewhere here where you can prepare food.
I understand your point. I'm surprised to see nevertheless a side-by-side dishwasher and a refrigerator and a label on this plan that says kitchen.
Well, we can remove, we can remove the reference to a kitchen. I mean, my understanding, again, is that it's the ability to put a stove into cook food is what separates a habitable area from a separate dwelling.
Okay, if your position is that this is not an apartment, because it does not have cooking facilities, I would want that to be reflected in any decision by the board.
Thank you. Yeah, and that would be fine.
And I should note that some of these other documents contradict that. I believe the, there was a letter from, original letter from Mr. Chesley referred to an apartment.
You're talking about the denial letter dated September 21st?
Yeah.
Building inspector?
Well, I believe that condition would take this out of that classification. That's what I believe, yeah.
Okay, so your position is it's a residential dwelling, it's not an apartment, and there will be no...okay.
Yes.
I did have a question along the same lines, and I would, if the board sees fit to approve this, recommend we put in a condition that says there will be no oven, stove, range top, or built-in microwave. So how are the parents going to heat food?
That would be, that would be fine. I mean, they could come over to the main house. I don't feel like my parents would be cooking anyway, but I can envision them putting some groceries in the refrigerator. I can envision me supplying them with meals that they'd put in the refrigerator without having to come over for milk, for breakfast, for cereal. So I don't envision them doing, you know, making their own meals there.
Now, I did talk to Ms. Tenaglia at the Board of Health today about this issue, when she said countertop microwave is okay. They don't consider that to make a kitchen, because people might have them in a foyer or a hallway or wherever. So Board of Health is okay with that, but not with any of these other enumerated items, oven, stove, range top, or built-in microwave. How many cars do your folks have, are they going to have?
They have two cars, and our property accommodates six cars. So we have a driveway in the front that fits three cars, and the driveway in the back fits three cars.
Okay, that would include the exit parking, the existing block parking on Harborview then, to get six cars?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. Any intention to rent this at some point?
No.
Do you know if anybody rents the houses down there in the summertime?
Oh, quite a few. I'd say more than half the neighborhood is rented. Our neighbors actually on both sides of us, on Northern, rent almost the entire summer.
Okay, are you folks year-rounders?
Oh, we are not, but we hope to be in three or four years' time. Have a fear and love.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Donahue?
I have no questions.
Mr. Capoli?
No questions.
And Ms. Mayhew?
No questions.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, is there anybody in the public who would like to speak either for or against this petition? If you do, please come to the microphone, identify yourself and your address.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the zoning board, Attorney Mike Ford. And I rise on behalf of Michael and Mary Ann Brockelman. They're here with me this evening. They own the property on the other side of Northern Avenue. It's actually, the address is actually 25 Eastern Avenue, but it's directly across the street from the existing garage. They've owned it for about 24 years. They rented in the area before that for about 20 years, so they've, in this particular neighborhood. So they've been in this neighborhood for over 40 years. I'd first like to suggest, Mr. Chairman, that what is really needed here, given the application, which is to create, if you read the application, to alter an existing garage, to create a permanent residence. So they're looking to have two residences on this lot. That's what the relief being sought is. Mr. Zender, while we've had a banter back and forth with respect to whether it's a kitchen or not a kitchen, has quoted the accessory bylaw section a number of times, which deals with a second dwelling unit. So it seems to me that, under our zoning bylaw, Section 325-18, it's pretty clear you can only have one single-family dwelling on a lot, period, in Harwood, unless you create a second dwelling unit by some legal means. And one way to do that would be to come under the accessory dwelling bylaw. But I think, Mr. Chairman, as you correctly point out, the applicant's not eligible for that. And they're not eligible because the lot is only 10,250 square feet, and you've got to have a minimum of 15,000 square feet. So as I understand it, they're not pursuing that section. So you've referenced this Section 325-14 that says accessory dwellings with bedrooms are subject to a special permit. It's hard to know from that particular section whether that means an accessory dwelling, excuse me, accessory structure that already has bedrooms, and you're going to change it, is subject to a special permit, or you can actually create bedrooms by way of special permit in an accessory structure. The language in 14 is not really clear. But putting that aside, that's not what's happening here. They're not seeking to create just a bedroom. They're seeking to create an entire living space, as by their definition, by the floor plans. And frankly, I agree with one of the prior speakers, who says, look, this is a dwelling unit. Mr. Zender described it as a dwelling unit. The application is for a permanent residence. So it seems to me that if that's what they're seeking, and they're not eligible under H, if we look to the section the building commissioner referenced, Section 325-54, that's our non-conforming section. And with all due respect, it is the building commissioner that makes a determination whether something is a kitchen or not, not necessarily the Board of Health. It's a zoning determination as to whether this is a dwelling or not. And he sent them here under 325-54. As you know, under 325-54A, non-conforming structures, 1 through 6, deal with structures that are currently single or two-family residential structures. So they can't seek a special permit under any of those, because this is a garage. It was built in 1983. I examined the files. At the time it was built, it met the setback requirements. My clients, who have lived there for many years, said the garage was built for the purpose of storing a boat, and the prior owner moved, stored their boat there in the off-season. The house was always used that fronts on Harbor Road seasonally, and the current owners use it seasonally. So this isn't something where we're creating, or attempting to create, an accessory apartment for somebody who's a year-round resident, somebody who has aging parents, if you will, that are here year-round, and they really need a place to live close by. No one, to our knowledge, lives in this place year-round. I think the applicant themselves have said they hope to in a couple of years. So it seems to me this falls under 325-54-7, which is all other non-conforming structures, because it's a garage, doesn't have any residential use currently. There are no bedrooms in it currently. If it is, then if what they're proposing is an extension or alteration or a change of use, it requires a variance under the bylaw. It's pretty clear. And so you ask yourself, okay, what is an extension or an alteration? If we go to the definitional section, an extension or alteration does include interior renovations. They're constructing a dwelling unit within this. Bedroom, living area, a loft up above with a staircase going up to it, what was a kitchen, at least when they applied for it. And so it seems to me what we have is a structure that doesn't qualify as a current single or two-family dwelling. It's an other non-conforming use, and it's non-conforming because although it was built as a conforming garage in 83, the setbacks have changed. So as a result, it's all of a sudden got this non-conforming status, and they're attempting to use that as the springboard, perhaps under 325-54. But it seems to me they fall into that variance category, and if they do, I haven't heard any variance conditions, and I don't believe there are any variance conditions, frankly, that can be met in this particular case under Chapter 48, Section 10. If the board is disposed to treat this as a special permit, somehow shoehorning it into 325-14 and saying that that covers the creation of bedrooms in what is otherwise simply a garage currently, and I'm not sure that it does, then I'd suggest to you respectfully they really don't meet the special permit criteria. One of the findings you need to make, in addition to whether or not there'll be additional impacts here, is what will be the effect on the neighborhood? There are 10 letters that have been provided to me from neighbors, all in close proximity, all in opposition. And I know that Mr. Hilliard said we've received correspondence, but I think it's important, if board members haven't seen it, every single letter is in opposition. Every single letter was concerned about the precedent of this undersized lot, all of a sudden having a second dwelling unit on it, and the potential that that has for this very dense neighborhood to start with, where there are many outbuildings that are nothing more than garages currently, that see this and say, wow, they didn't have the size to be an accessory dwelling, but they went out and they got an accessory dwelling anyway. And Mr. Zender has said a couple of times that what is being proposed is in keeping with... And, um, Mr. Zender has said a couple of times that what is being proposed is in keeping with, um, the wishes of town meeting. I'd suggest it's not, respectfully. Uh, the wishes of town meeting were that accessory apartments were allowed in the town of Barnstable by vote of town meeting if you met the requirements of three twenty-five fifty-one H, one of which is that the minimum lot size has got to be fifteen thousand square feet. We're on a very small lot here at ten thousand, uh, two hundred and fifty square feet. And so to suggest that somehow this is in keeping with what town meeting voted, it's not. Now, I read the, the memo from the planner, and Charlene, uh, simply reviews the purposes clause of H, which doesn't go any farther than that. And of course, if you go farther than that, and you look at all the criteria, this, this can't meet the criteria. So to suggest that this is the kind of conversion and creation of an additional dwelling unit that town meeting authorized, I'd respectfully suggest it does not. It doesn't fit within the purview of that. So, um, if one of the, uh, factors that this board is, is concerned with is figuring out what the impact on the neighborhood is, I'd ask the board to take into consideration, um, all of the letters, which to a person felt that this would create, um, additional congestion in terms of the number of cars. There's a parking requirement for an additional unit. This is already a small lot, has two parking lots, one on the side of the road that faces my clients, and one on the other side of the road. Congestion flows from that necessarily. My clients, I will tell you, um, uh, they have observed and, uh, been subject to, frankly, some of the goings-on on this O'Leary parcel since they've bought it. They've had trouble, frankly, with noise, with parties. This last summer was an improvement. My clients had spoken to, um, Mrs. O'Leary about it, and there was some improvement this last summer. But the area, as you're looking at it from my client's property, uh, they look directly at the garage, then there's an open space, and this is a split-level, um, house that's on the O'Leary property. There's a door that goes under, so there must be some sort of access or unit underneath, and then there's a door that goes up, so it's a split-level house. That open area to the left is where the parties generally occur, and there has been frankly, um, a lot of noise. And my clients are concerned that this additional unit will result in even more people using this particular property. So, um, I bring that to your attention respectfully, uh, as neighbors, but it has been an issue. And it has been one that, um, uh, my clients have had to speak to these, uh, folks about. So, um, I'd suggest to you, um, in, in summary, the following. One, what was applied for here was an additional dwelling unit. It's right in the application, uh, permanent residence. It's not permitted without a variance. Um, we've heard no argument for a variance. And although one was applied for in the alternative, as I, seeing the ad, I'd suggest to you that there are no variance conditions, and that, um, uh, this use cannot be allowed by a special permit. The section three twenty-five fourteen does not talk about the creation of a separate dwelling unit for family or otherwise. And, um, uh, I don't think that it fits within the special permit criteria. The planner's section that she referenced is for, um, accessory apartments. They've indicated that, or they've agreed, I think, with you, Mr. Chairman, that they're not properly under that, because they don't meet the lot size. So again, that kind of keeps us going round and round, and if they filed under three twenty-five fifty-four, which is what the building commissioner sent them here on, the non-conforming section, you end up in subsection seven, which requires a variance, because this is an accessory structure that is just a garage, and it's not a single or two-family dwelling, and we're seeking to change the use of it to make it residential and make it a dwelling. So for all of those reasons, I'd respectfully ask, on behalf of my clients, that the board have to do consideration, not grant this particular request. I will tell you, Mr. Chairman, I'm also in receipt of an additional letter that I didn't hear, uh, Mr. Hilliard refer to. It was from, um, Attorney Murphy, and I don't know whether Sheila received it or not, but it's dated, uh, November twenty-seventh, and I received a copy, and I'm happy to give the, the board one. It's also in opposition, and it's written on behalf of, um, Barbara Murphy, trustee, uh, of property on thirteen Eastern Ave. If I may present that to, I don't know whether you have that, Sheila.
I do not.
Thank you for the opportunity to address you on the issue.
Chairman, may, may I ask Attorney Ford?
Yes.
Because you're all warmed up in there. I just wanted to-
Absolutely.
Get some clarification. What evidence do you have that this is not, or that this is going to be, a substantial detriment to the neighborhood? That, that the statute and the requires that we find that it, there is no substantial. You're arguing that there is. What evidence do you have to present that it would be a substantial detriment?
Well, I, I guess my first response to you-
Staying on the special permit.
Okay. So how you get to the special permit, I don't know, but assuming you do, assuming you somehow figure out how you're gonna deal with this as a special permit, okay?
Fine.
And I, I would suggest on that again, under three twenty-five fourteen, which the chairman referenced, which says a, an accessory structure that has bedrooms requires a, or requires a special permit. This has more than bedrooms. Why do I think it's substantially more detrimental? The precedent set in the neighborhood of accessory structures on small lots like this becoming separate dwelling units, I'd suggest creates, um, additional congestion from the additional dwelling unit. There will clearly be more people using this property than there are now.
It's a future issue. That doesn't exist now. This particular request, if granted-
If granted, would result in that, is what I'm suggesting. Because I think, once you've gone to two dwelling units-
It would result in that if this particular petitioner was granted the right to have, whatever we want to call it, apartment, that in and of itself would create a traffic issue?
Well, I think you're gonna put more, you have the potential for more cars there, because you've got two dwelling units.
Testimony would, there'd be two cars. And I'm not trying to defend that. I'm just asking you what, how you get to the-
Cars is one. Cars is one, and, uh, I'd suggest to you, if that becomes a separate unit, you're gonna get more people using the back parking lot, which is off of, um, Northern Ave, as opposed to the one around the other side, which is where the garage is. And keep in mind, this was a garage under the prior unit, owner, and is used for the things that we commonly use garage for: store a boat, park a car, something else. Now, all of a sudden, it's, it's, it's a dwelling unit.
Yeah.
Okay? So you have a different level of intensity of use.
So is that a traffic issue you're now maybe bringing?
That's traffic. It's parking, and I'd suggest the, uh, the result of noise. Garage, you don't hear any noise from, generally.
Okay. So on the noise issue, and I'm, what I'm looking for personally, on this roll, I'm looking for evidence that there is a substantial detriment to the neighborhood. On the garage, on the noise issue, have there ever been any complaints made to the police?
I don't know whether there's been, uh, police complaints, but there have been complaints made to the applicant.
Have any traffic studies ever been done in the area to determine what the flow of traffic is, or could be, or any of that whatsoever?
Uh, no, I haven't made a traffic study. I'm just suggesting that if you add two dwellings-
Yeah.
-on one lot, which is in violation of section three twenty-five eighteen of the zoning bylaw, so you have to ignore that to, to allow this, I'd suggest respectfully, okay? Unless you feel it meets an accessory apartment, which it can't, without a variance. So, um, I'd suggest also that you've got a property value issue. You start getting small lots with separate dwelling units and garages, and I think it, it creates a different neighborhood, frankly.
And what do you have to bear on that? You, you think somebody who has a-
That's an observation of my clients.
Okay.
All right? And, and that's, that's their feeling regarding it. And, uh, we'd suggest that, um, this is not a good precedent in a residential neighborhood. The town meeting spoke very clearly, yes, these can be allowed, but we want the minimum lot size to be fifteen thousand square feet. Now, now, the town is working hard at perhaps coming in with an as-of-right accessory, uh, bylaw. We may see one in a future town meeting, but it's not in the bylaw yet.
Thank you.
And for all the reasons I've stated previously, Mr. Hilliard, I don't think they're properly before you as a special permit. And, uh-
That's a different argument.
It is.
Let me just make a couple of comments, because you keep coming back to what the chairman said. Uh, I didn't ask for a variance, because I agree, they can't meet, in my opinion, the requirement for variance. They can't meet three twenty-five eighteen, which I stated. But we do have three twenty-five fourteen Q, which town meeting put in. It must have some meaning. Residential accessory building that contains, contains. Doesn't say it's limited to only bedrooms.
Right.
It doesn't really say what else can be part of a, an accessory building, uh, residential. But the, the town meeting does say we can grant special permits for those. And I think it's up to this board to determine what the residential accessory building is and whether or not it meets the requirements for a special permit under the section I asked the applicant to address, which Mr. Hilliard was just referring to, which was three twenty-five fifty-one A, conditions of approval. And I understand your clients don't like it, okay? But the test is substantial detriment to the neighborhood, not to the neighbors. We've been around and around on this one with the neighbors.
That's why I said, um, if it was just my clients here, I would agree with you, and you have to determine what the neighborhood is. So I'd ask all of the board members to take a look at the fact that there are ten letters. It's not just my client.
And we look-
And everyone is against, and everyone has a concern about this.
The tenor of them is it's a slippery slope. If we do this, the neighborhood's going down. It's a seasonal neighborhood. It's already tight. Any special permit that this board grants in the old campgrounds has all of these effects. There are going to be more parking, and under your theory, this board would pre- precluded from granting any special permits essentially south of twenty-eight.
Has this board ever, Mr. Chairman, has, in your tenure, do you recall this board ever granting a special permit to allow a second dwelling unit in the campgrounds on, on the same lot?
I don't think it is a second dwelling. I think it's a residential accessory building that contains bedrooms.
So, uh, do you recall the Board of Appeals ever granting a special permit to allow something like this in a separate structure in the campgrounds or in this area?
Not to be flippant, I don't remember what I had for breakfast this morning, so I've been on this board for nine or ten years.
Thank you, Mr. Holden.
How can I remember that? I'm sorry.
No, I, I appreciate that, but-
But, you know, also, you know, we, each case is unique. Whether we did it before or didn't do it, really, in our view, doesn't control what we do in this case.
And, and has the board used Q-
Yes.
To take a garage that, um, didn't have any bedrooms in it and allow a garage by special permit to have that?
I don't remember what the, the structure was, but we have granted special permits under this section previously this board has. I don't remember if it was a garage or what it was.
It seems to me the way Q reads is that if you have an existing accessory building that contains bedrooms now, not one you want to put in-
Where's the word existing in Q?
It says a residential accessory building that contains bedrooms is subject.
Right, but where's the word existing? It doesn't say existing.
Well, read the next sentence. Residential accessory buildings without bedrooms-
Right.
-are not subject to special permit review.
Right. So, um, I, I guess the question is, if you're going to build a new accessory structure with bedrooms in it, you view this as a special permit? That's what you're saying?
I, I don't see any distinction between a new or an existing. I see no distinction made in three twenty-five fourteen Q.
Okay, so I guess the question really boils down to, do you look at this as a dwelling unit, or is this really just bedrooms? I don't know. The floor plan they filed, the application they filed?
Well, we have-
It looks like a dwelling unit to, to the neighbors.
We have tended to follow, or not tended, we have followed the Board of Health's definition of a kitchen. And for a dwelling unit, it has to have a kitchen. That's under the state health code. Has to be a kitchen. And if it doesn't have a kitchen-
The actual range, not even just a kitchen.
I'm sorry?
It has to have the actual range, right?
There's a letter that specifies other cooking elements as well.
Yes. It would have to have oven, stove, range topper, built-in microwave to be a kitchen. And if it's gonna be a dwelling, the state health code says it has to have a kitchen, which means it has to have one of these things. These folks said they're not gonna have that, and we're gonna put in any resolution, uh, any special permit that might be granted by this board, a condition that they don't have that.
And is this, uh, uh, accessory structure gonna be able to be rented?
Sure, why not?
To, to third parties?
There's, there's no restriction on that. Are we gonna prevent people down in this area from renting their houses, or even doing Airbnbs? We don't have that power.
Without a kitchen?
There is a pair, uh, provision which says that, uh, one of the units must be maintained by the, the owner.
Right, and that's under the accessory apartment bylaw, which they're not under.
That's the one they can't qualify under.
But I'm saying that might be, um, telling as to what that the Board of Selectmen Town Meeting meant.
Can I, can I, I, I don't believe that permitting residential bedrooms within an accessory structure gives you the right to rent that separate structure separately, because, again, it doesn't have a kitchen. You know, you'd be violating the health code to rent it out.
Exactly.
Well, I-
But you can rent the whole property out.
I mean, I think you could rent it, just like an Airbnb. People rent a bedroom.
Well, you could rent it as, you could rent it as a bedroom. You can't rent it as a dwelling, so.
I, no. Anyway, anything further, Attorney Ford?
There isn't.
I, I do have a comment-
Okay.
For Attorney Ford.
Sure.
You've mentioned several times that there were ten letters from, from neighbors opposing this. I wonder if you've looked at the list of abutters and noted that most of the letters did not come from abutters, and most of the abutters did not send letters. So it would seem that the abutters on the list of abutters that we receive do not have the level of opposition that other neighbors in the neighborhood have.
Well, my clients are abutters. They're directly across the street.
They are, but they are, they are only, I think, two or three of the abutters sent letters, but most of the letters did not come from abutters.
How many abutters were there?
Down here?
You got the list you printed? No. How many abutters are there? That was in our list. Canterbury, Cavaleski, Smith, Scott, Murray, Sawyer, Di Stefano, Colby, Capabianco, Mentis, Brockelman, La Couture, so-
Thirteen.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, thirteen. And I only have, I think only two of the letters came from abutters. I, I do have a question about the characterization of the parents not going to be cooking. We have two, and, uh, we're being given to understand that they're elderly, and they wouldn't be cooking, and they'd be eating in your house, and yet we have two parents who are active enough that they need two cars.
So, um, so, uh, my parents are in their mid-seventies, um, and my mom in particular, she broke her leg a couple of years ago. She's had two knee replacements. Our house is a split level. It's accessible only by a minimum of eight stairs to get to a bedroom. So part of this is, last summer, they only visited for a few days, because the stairs are a detriment to her, them coming to stay with us. And so part of this reason for wanting to do this is that it would be a one-story, single-flat, um, place for them to, to reside.
Would those same stairs in your, in the principal dwelling not inhibit her from getting in and out to cook or eat in your kitchen? Your dining room?
I, I know. I would just say, I, I mean, I don't want to make it sound like, you know, uh, my mom's in a wheelchair or anything like that. I just see, um, that, um, we, we eat outside a lot in the, in the, um, in the summertime. We, I, I, I don't see that being a detriment at all. We eat often with neighbors in the neighborhood, so I, I don't see that being, being an issue.
Could she get into your house-
Yes.
-without climbing those stairs and get into your kitchen without climbing those stairs?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, let's get back to the public. I thank you, Attorney Ford, for your comments. Anyone else like to speak to this application from the public? Okay, well, entertain a motion. Yes, sir. Would you like to add something?
May I just respond to a few of the points, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. First of all, in, I, I owe the board an apology, first of all, okay? This application was submitted by a builder on behalf of the applicant, who's obviously not educated in zoning law, reviewed what the building inspector said, submitted an application, which, when you look at the application, doesn't specifically say section fifty-one, just says, "To proceed with project alter existing garage to create permanent residence for aging parents, special permit pursuant to section three twenty-five table one use regulations and the area regulation." special permit pursuant to Section 325 Table 1 Use Regulations and the Area Regulation." They then went through the process. I was brought in. I looked at your zoning code, and the first thing that jumped out at me was Section G of 51H, which was, which is the lot area requirement for an accessory dwelling or an apartment. I communicated with the planning department. I had a number of conversations with Megan. I believed, and I'm not laying this at the feet of your planning department, but I believed that this was a permissible project as a separate dwelling unit, regardless of the area, because it was a separate structure. And that's, and again, Charlene's memo bears out that position. I walked into this hearing not really understanding how you could possibly permit this as a separate dwelling, but given the building inspector's letter and the planning's memo and the position, I thought that there was a way that this was done. And the chairman disabused me of that notion in the first five minutes of this hearing. So I've adjusted my presentation based on that to offer removal of the kitchen by compliance with the Board of Health. I think that means, with that condition, this is not a dwelling. And so all the arguments that Mr. Ford is advancing about it against it being a dwelling fall by the wayside. And we're left with accessory building that has residential with bedrooms. And what was not mentioned in this discussion yet is your use tables. You know, use 1B is accessory building residential with bedrooms, special permit in the RH1 district. So regardless of the 325-14-Q provisions, you specifically have in your use tables the fact that this is allowable by special permit. And it brings us back into a special permit. Now, cars, let's talk about cars. I think it's important, because we're getting into the facts of the intensity of use of this property. Section 325-39 of your bylaw lays out parking requirements, off-street parking requirements. A dwelling unit requires two parking spaces. This is not a second dwelling unit, so technically, it doesn't even require a third parking space. But Ms. O'Leary testified that there are six parking spaces on the property. That's three times what's required for a dwelling unit. So I think the assertion that some are going to create crowding in the streets may be a little misplaced. The number of abutters, you know, there's something I used to say to my ex-wife, and it's probably why my ex-wife is my ex-wife, okay? I used to say, "Just because you're angry doesn't mean I did something wrong." Okay? 10 letters is 10 letters, but it doesn't necessarily mean that there's a condition that creates a substantial detriment. And my client has informed me that she's been informed by a number of abutters that Mrs. Brockman or Mr. Brockman circulated a mailing to the neighborhood expressing concern about this. And I've been doing this for 30 years. Sometimes you get a lot of opposition because of the way that people have organized opposition. Email chains are the death of in some of these cases. So just because 10 people write letters, and it's easy to write a letter. Sometimes 10 people write letters because there's a significant problem with the project. It's just too big. It's just too massive. It's in the wrong location. It doesn't belong there. And you see the room fill up. Sometimes you get a number of letters because of just the way that the opposition has been organized and communicated with. And I'm not intending to malign anybody in that process. I'm just saying, 10 letters sometimes just means that it's 10 letters. I think you have to look at this project and say, what is it about this project that's going to create traffic, congestion, noise, litter? My clients informed me of two incidences that occurred with the Brockman family. One was, they were having an outdoor movie for the kids, the neighborhood kids, and they were showing an outdoor movie. And they came over from across the street, didn't like it, they shut the movie down. One of them was a Fourth of July party, you know, and my client received a note the next day saying, "We really didn't like that." Those were two incidences. Entertaining, kids having parties, late nights, music. You know, sometimes you have houses that are endemic problems. You know, they're rental properties that are just carelessly rented, and they're over and over again problems. That shouldn't happen in a neighborhood. But normal and usual summer living in a somewhat densely populated neighborhood is a fact of life. And for somebody to have a party, or to have some people parked in the street occasionally to come celebrate something with you, I don't think is a reason to deny a special permit. I think it's a reason why neighbors should try to control themselves, but it does happen. I think in this particular case, and I'll wrap up right now, because it's been a while, I haven't heard any testimony of substantial detriment or facts that support allegations of substantial detriment. I think we have some neighbors that are concerned about where the neighborhood might go. But anybody who wants to put residential bedrooms in an accessory structure has to come before this board. And you can look at the neighborhood, you can look at what's going on, you can listen to the abutters, and you can make your own interpretation. And there may be situations in which that's not viable. I've only been before you a number of times. I think I've heard two of them already, you know, in the couple of times I've been here. I think it's something that is the way that people are treating these accessory buildings. And Horwich, and sometimes it works, and sometimes it doesn't. Here, I think it works. So thank you.
Thank you. Will entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
So may.
Second, Mr. Donahue. Okay, the public hearing is closed. I'll now ask the board for their comments. And if you could please state for the record whether you approve it or not, and the reasons why, and then we'll see if there's a motion.
I'm going to vote in favor of it, but I want to tell you why. In my opinion, these meetings are not popularity contests. It's not a matter of how many people say this, or how many people say that. I take, coming before, that's why they call it the Board of Appeal, is to take a look at the law and either conform to it or prove that we're not conforming to it, whether the issue is substantial or not substantial. But that's why I'd ask the question. I don't see any evidence of substantial detriment, accent on the word "substantial." I wasn't trying to be smart by asking Attorney Ford about traffic reviews, police reports. But those are the kinds of things I think I would want to see if I was going to say no to a special permit, particularly when you get to substantial. The issue of the advertising, I find that is what we call in the law scribner's error. And as long as the people who read the ads and can see the ads have a reasonable idea of what it is the petitioner's asking for, I've not seen a court overturn that yet. As long as it's reasonable, and the description that was advertised is a description of what we're talking about here tonight. I don't, I think you've made your case, and I don't see anything to the contrary. So my vote is yes.
Ms. Mueller?
I would oppose this if it were going forward as an accessory building with an apartment. You have assured us it's not an apartment.
Yes.
You have offered to amend the plan that shows a kitchen.
Yes.
I still find it somewhat insulting to common sense that the plan is laid out the way it is, with everything except a built-in microwave or a range. Clearly, there will be some kind of microwave there, and people will be using it as they wish to use it. On the other hand, with your representation that it does not meet the definition of a kitchen and does not meet the definition of an accessory apartment, I would have to support it.
Thank you. Yes, and I also support it, because I think this board, under 325-14-Q, does have the authority and the right to grant a special permit for a residential accessory building that contains bedrooms. I think that's what it is, as long as we put in a condition that there will be no oven, stove, range top, or built-in microwave. And that is consistent with the Board of Health. I see no adverse significant effect on the neighborhood. The plan that's submitted makes it look very attractive. I think it will fit in with the neighborhood. And frankly, from the, where I think is the front, this is the front with the double doors, is it not? I mean, it looks like a garage. I see no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. I mean, it's a two-car garage as it is. There'll be two vehicles. It's sort of a swap-out on vehicles. I think the location is appropriate. It's a residential neighborhood. It stays residential. The town is in favor of encouraging accessory apartments and accessory spaces. And I think this is an accessory space. I want to be careful of the terminology here. What was the last thing? Oh, and the adequate facilities, the Board of Health has found that tying into the existing sector will be adequate, again, provided there's no kitchen. So again, we'd want that condition in the special permit. It's so tight there, we'd also want to put a condition in that there will be no demolition, or construction, or new landscape, landscaping between June 30 and Labor Day, 2019 and 2020. I could barely squeeze by with your work going on in the front the other day. In fact, I hit those snow steaks across the street from you. It was pretty doggone tight down there. So yes, I am in favor of this. Mr. Donahue?
Being familiar with the campground area, and having known people who lived down there over the years, it's probably one of the nicer areas to rent. And many people rent for the summer down there. And when people rent on Cape Cod, as in any tourist area, they're there to enjoy themselves. And having children who make noise, as long as it's kept under control, I see no detriment to the neighborhood. Clearly, I can't see how, I understand why people maybe agree by it, but I do think it fits within the confines of our bylaws. I vote for it.
All right, Mr. Capoli, you're not going to vote, but certainly offer your comments if you have any, please.
The only concern I had was, Ms. O'Leary has a cow. Other than that, no.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mayhew?
I agree with the rest of the board. I think it meets the requirements for a special permit. I don't think there's any new detriment to the neighborhood. It's a huge rental area. You can barely drive down there as it is without their extra bedrooms. And I just think it's ridiculous to imply that it's anything other than just an extra space for family. I would totally support it.
The only other comment I'll make, I think when you look at the plan, it's going to be consistent with the buildings down there. I don't see any, I think for substantial detriment to the neighborhood, in my view, we'd have to look at serious things, like a significant decrease in value. I don't see any decrease in value coming from this kind of structure. And I know a lot of the letters we got, they were concerned about, you know, a slippery slope. A couple of them use that term, that this is going to open the floodgates. Well, the special permit section is there. And if people feel they qualify or want to put in a residential accessory building that contains bedrooms, right now, they can come to the Board and see if they can meet the requirements for a special permit. But I mean, we're not opening this up widespread, that the provision's in the code, and each applicant would have to come in and make their case, and we'd look at it. So I disagree with the idea that it's a slippery slope. Presumably, at this town meeting, there'll be a bylaw proposed to the town to actually increase the availability of special permits. I guess, I'm not sure how they're going to do it, but to make accessory apartments or accessory structures with bedrooms more available to the public. Now, whether the town will accept it or not, I have no idea. But that certainly is the intention of the selectmen, and the town planner, and the planning board. And Chatham is looking at the very same thing. If you read the Chronicle, there's been several articles recently. Chatham, our neighbor, you know, right next door, is wanting to do the exact same thing. And I believe there are a few other towns that are actively looking at that. It's sort of the wave of the future here, because we're pricing out younger people, back to life. So with all of that, unless there's any further discussion by the board, I'll entertain a motion on this case. Make a motion to close the public hearing. No, we did that, but we need a motion on case 218-30.
I'll make the motion, and the board, for John A. O'Leary and Megan O'Leary trustees through their attorney, William, excuse me, not Mr. Brock...
Ben Zender.
Ben Zender.
Thank you.
Have applied for special permit on the alternative, a various decree of accessory building with an apartment in a pre-existing, non-conforming detached garage.
All right.
I'm sorry.
No, okay, all right, I'll make the motion. I'll move then, in case 218-30, the board grant to John A. O'Leary and Megan O'Leary trustees through their attorney, Ben Zender, a special permit to create an accessory building residential with bedrooms in a pre-existing, non-conforming detached garage. The applicant is pursuant to the code of the town of Horwich section...
325...
Property is located at 33 Harborview Road, MAP 6, parcel E5-8 and the RH1 zoning district, with the following conditions, that the... that there be no demolition, construction, or new landscaping in the period between June 30 and Labor Day, 2019 and 2020, that all of the work be done in accordance with the building plans and the site plan submitted with the application, and that in the accessory dwelling residential there be no oven, stove, range top, or built-in microwave installed in the structure at any time. A countertop microwave will be permitted.
And there was going to be an amendment to the plan where the word "kitchen" appears?
And the plans, yes, thank you. And the plans will be amended to take out any reference to apartment, and that it be identified as an accessory building residential. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Mr. Hilliard?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Hilliard, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Special permit granted.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Looks like a kitchen, and it walks like a...
But my name's not...
Okay, all, we will call the next case. Mr. Hilliard, if you would, please.
Could we take a two-minute break?
Two-minute break, yes, okay. I am not going to stamp these plans, because they'll be bringing in...
Is that the, yeah, case thirty-three?
Yes.
Twenty eighteen thirty-three, are you here? Todd and Allison Fleischer, are you here?
Yes.
Okay. We're going to go back on the record. Mr. Hilliard, if you could, please call case twenty eighteen thirty-three.
Case two eighteen dash thirty-three, Todd and Allison Fleischer, through their agent, Chris Childs of Patriot Builders, have applied for special permit to demolish and reconstruct a pre-existing, non-conformal, conforming, single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the code of the Town of Howard's, section three twenty-five dash fifty-four A parentheses five, as set forth in MGL Mass. General Law's Chapter forty-eight, Section six. The property is located at forty-two Pilgrim Road, map fourteen, parcel Q fourteen, in the RH one zoning district. We have one piece of correspondence to the Zoning Board of Appeal from Katie Tenaglia, Senior Health Agent. I reviewed the application for the special permit for the Zoning Board of Appeals to demolish and reconstruct pre-existing, non-conforming, single dwelling, excuse me, at forty-two Pilgrim Road. Current septic system was designed for four bedrooms and passed a Title V inspection in two thousand seventeen. An approved disposal system construction permit for five bedrooms will be required prior to building permit application approval. No variance to some Title V or the local regulation will be granted. Should a five-bedroom septic system design not work in this space, the dwelling will be limited to four bedrooms.
Okay, on this application, the voting members will be Mr. Hilliard, Ms. Muller, Mr. Donahue, Mr. Capoli, Ms. Mayhew. I will not be voting. If you could introduce yourself, sir, and.
Chris Childs from Patriot Builders, behalf of the applicants who are not here with us this evening, couldn't be here. So, we're proposing to demolish the existing, non-conforming dwelling and replace it with a new dwelling. The existing setback in the front is non-conforming. It's fourteen point three feet off the front lot line. We're proposing to reduce that by one foot, so the proposed front setback will now be fifteen point three feet. All other setbacks will conform. Building height, building coverage, and site coverage will also conform. I will, I just want to point out, there's also a right-of-way on the south side of this property that, for access to thirty-seven Air Lane. And I just want to point out, we're going to make sure that's maintained throughout construction, and obviously, when the project is completed, that, that will remain in place. The design is consistent with those of the neighborhood and will not cause any undue nuisance hazard or congestion. We feel it, it is a nice addition to the neighborhood, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
The right-of-way is identified as six-by-eighty reserve area?
Uh.
On the plan?
No, that, that's the reserve area for the septic. The right-of-way is referred to as twenty-foot R O W, and it is located on the south side of the lot. It is just some dash lines. It, it's shown as a driveway, which is basically what it is, what it's used for, for both properties.
Okay, so then what do they do? Go over to the left to thirty-seven Air?
Excuse me?
This is for thirty-seven Air Lane?
Yes. So, so they, from Pilgrim Road, they, they cross through the property.
Oh, I see it. Okay, I'm sorry.
To get to the back of their property. That's the only access.
Goes all the way fro, okay, I'm sorry. I was misreading the plan. Mr. Hilliard?
Thank you. Do you know what the increase in the square footage of habitable spaces?
Increase of habitable space is, let me take a look at the plans.
I ask that because there's an issue of the replacement structure. Can't be more than twenty-five percent greater than the structure that's existing now.
Mm-hmm. I'm not sure the exist, what the existing habitable space is. I would have to look into that.
I think we need to know that, because that's one of the conditions we have to find to approve and not approve. Okay.
Just a point, I, I don't think that applies anymore in light of the Gale case.
Have they amended the bylaw?
No, they need to. I told the town planner they need to, but they have not done that. So, when they're looking, you know, in connection with the, the upcoming review.
Okay.
I said they really need to drop C, D, and E.
They certainly do.
Yeah, because none of those are applicable anymore.
Well, yeah, I, I thought that would be after the, isn't, in the bylaw, the twenty-five percent would be once completed. It can't be increased by more than twenty-five percent going forward, is that?
Well, it really doesn't apply anymore in light of a court case, so.
Okay.
Right, Mr. Crowell, Attorney Crowell?
Yes.
Ms. Muller?
I was afraid I would sneeze yesterday and the building would fall over. Beyond that, I have no questions.
The only question I have on your proposed, you're going from existing setback on the east side of fourteen point three to fifteen point three?
Yes.
Still on the plan showing a fourteen point three. I, I don't know why that's there.
Well, there, that's referenced in the existing building. So, the existing building is superimposed on.
Oh, I see, okay. You've left it, okay.
With those little tick marks. Yeah, that's, that's what.
So, the existing is inside the little dashes?
Exactly.
Okay, because it said it was a label proposed house. That's what threw me. I have nothing further. I think, Mr. Donahue?
I have no question.
Mr. Capoli?
Mr. Hilliard asked my, my question, so.
Ms. Hilliard?
What?
I'm sorry, Ms. Hilliard. Ms. Mayhew?
Oh, God.
I'm thinking of him and looking at you.
No question, no question.
Um, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak either in favor or in opposition to this application? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Regent.
Okay, public hearing is closed. Let's poll the board and see what they think on this case. Let even with, let's start with Ms. Mayhew this time, to that side.
All right, well, help me if I'm, if I'm off, but it seems to fall under the Gale case. It doesn't exist, it doesn't increase any non-conformities.
Well, it would, I think the question is, well, it would be a special permit under the Gale case.
Right, yeah.
The question is, is there going to be a significant detriment to the neighborhood by this proposal?
Okay, no, that's what I'm saying, no.
What do you think about that?
I do not think it does.
Okay. Mr. Capoli?
I agree.
The same, Mr. Donahue?
I agree as well.
Yeah, I think it meets the requirements of the Gale case. I, I don't see any substantial detriment. It's gonna, it is and will remain a residential house. It looks very attractive. If anything, I think it will fit much better with the neighborhood, which has been pretty much rehabbed up and down the street. It's, it's, it's kind of sad. It's one of the last old timers, but it looks like kind of a wreck. I mean, it just, unfortunately, it's sort of deteriorated over time. And I think it will be an improvement, if anything. Ms. Muller?
I, I agree.
Okay. Now, Mr. Hilliard, sorry.
I agree.
Okay, I will entertain a motion then in case twenty eighteen dash thirty-three.
Case twenty eighteen thirty-three, Todd, Allison Fletcher, through their agent, Chris Childs of Patriot Builders, have applied for a special permit to demolish it and reconstruct a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling pursuant to the code of Town of Howard's three twenty-five dash fifty-four, sec, section A, as set forth in Mass. General Law, forty-eight, Section six. The property is located at forty-two Pilgrim Ave, parcel, map fourteen, parcel Q fourteen, in the RH one zoning district.
And that the board grant a special permit?
And that the board grants a special permit.
Subject to one condition.
One condition will be to the dates, there be no demolition or construction, new landscaping between the dates of six-thirty, Labor Day through.
Twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen, twenty. Only.
No, that's all.
Okay.
The other is something else.
Could read it anywhere.
Okay, so, the motion is to grant the special permit, subject to the one condition of no demolition, construction, or new landscaping between six-thirty and Labor Day, twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. Again, just because of the tightness of the road system down on that street. Can I have a second to Mr. Donahue's motion, please?
Second.
Second, okay. Well, Mr. Capoli raised his hand first, but.
Okay.
Rubalize it for the, for, okay. All, any further discussion by the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Special permit granted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, I forgot, it's got to be subject to submitted plans, but those without saying is that's, they're not going to get a permit without a, once I stamp these. Okay, we will, Mr. Hilliard, if you could call case twenty eighteen thirty-four, please.
Case twenty, two thousand eighteen dash thirty-four, Peter T. and Linda R. Cure, is that the right pronunciation? Cure?
Yes.
Through their agent, Attorney William Crowell, have applied for special permit or in the alternative of variance for the construction of a retaining wall with a fireplace incorporated therein within the setback. The application is pursuant to the code of the Town of Howard's, section three twenty-five dash fifty-four parentheses two and or parentheses seven. In Table two, area regulations, is set forth in MGL Chapter forty-eight, Section six. Property is located at one-one-four Clearwater Drive, map sixty-three, parcel G one oh three dash A, in the RH zoning district. We have two articles of correspondence, one from the Board of Health, case two-one, two thousand eighteen dash thirty-four. The current septic system was designed for four bedrooms and passed a Title V inspection in two thousand sixteen. Three variances were approved by the Board of Health for septic system setbacks in nineteen ninety-two. As the plan is shown, the Health Department has no issue with the location of the proposed retaining wall with the fireplace. Proposed structure is located on the back of the dwelling, whereas the septic system is located in the front of the dwelling. It's important to note that the home is located in a Zone Two and is therefore restricted to four bedrooms maximum. And we have another correspondence from the Conservation Commission, Conservation Jurisdiction, and has received approval.
Okay, Attorney Crowell, we will have voting on this case. Mr. Hilliard, Ms. Muller, Mr. Donahue, Mr. Capoli, and Ms. Mayhew.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Introduce yourself for the record, please, and who's with you.
Thank you for pronouncing my name correctly, which is Crowell. I think Mr. Hederstadt got us off on a little bit of the Crowell part, but it's, as the crow flies.
But you corrected as often enough.
Mr. Hilliard wants to fit in and, and, you know.
Even though I don't remember breakfast, I remember Crowell.
Because you tell us the great Howard's historical stories. So, not a big deal, just, but thank you. I'm seated here tonight with Mike Takark of Earth and Stone Masonry, and I'm representing Peter and Linda Cure regarding this property in question at one-one-four Clearwater Drive. As you can see from the assessor's map, it's located on the waters of Buck's Pond in the Great Sand, what's known as the Great Sand Lake area. And we have two plans that we've submitted. The first is a plot plan of existing hardscape or existing conditions by Ryder and Wilcox that shows you what exists on the ground now to the rear of the property. It shows a fireplace, a retaining wall, patio, and the like. And it also shows that the existing dwelling is sixteen point two feet from the Westerly Lot Line, and the fireplace retaining wall at its closest point is sixteen point four feet. So, it's a little bit further, two tenths of a foot further away from the lot line than the existing dwelling. The second plan, and I, I meant to mention with Mr. Takark, who is the principal of Earth and Stone Masonry, has been in business in Howard's here for eighteen years, building these types of structures. And I submitted pictures so you could see, have a, a better color picture of the type of work that he does in, in the, in the lower Cape area or the Cape Cod area, but has built many of these types of structures in Howard's and the surrounds over the last eighteen years. And I've represented him at least one other ti, one other time in the past. And as the letter from the Conservation Commission mentioned, he did go to the Conservation Commission and get, and get full approval for this retaining wall and fireplace prior to, to the construction of it. He has built several of these types of fireplaces and structures in Howard's. Does not, has never needed to go to the Building Department for any kind of a permit or approval in the past. And this is the first time that this has come up in Howard's for him. So, there's no building permit required, anything of that nature. So, there was nothing to trigger him to think that he needed to come before this board for any kind of approval. I believe it resulted from the neighbor contacting the Building Department and, and finally a complaint, and then that brought this to light for the first time from Mr. Takark in, in the Town of Howard's. So, I just wanted to be clear as far as what his intentions were, what his thought process was. He did do what he thought he was supposed to do, which was to go to the Conservation Commission, and it was fully vetted through the Conservation Commission and approved by them. So, the second plan that you have is an existing conditions plan as of a couple of years ago. And I circled and read the retaining wall. And this is the rear of the house extending towards the pond. I circled and read that retaining wall, because up until approximately a year ago, that retaining wall existed. It was in a, in a, in a deteriorating state of, of disrepair, and that was demolished and replaced by the retaining wall shown on the Ryder and Wilcox plan. The retaining wall, I'll call it the pre-existing, non-conforming retaining wall, because at one point, you can see down at the closest point, it was, it's hard to read, but it was six feet, two inches from the lot line. So, it was already too close. And at where it is. And at where it is connected, and it was connected to the house, that retaining wall that had been there for years was connected to the house with 16 feet 2 inches from the lot line. And that's the same point on the Ryder and Wilcox plan that shows the corner of the house there at 16 feet 2 inches from the lot line. What he did was demolish the pre-existing nonconforming retaining wall and build one that was, that is now 10 feet better, so to speak. Because at the closest point of the old one, it was 6 feet 2 inches. Now, the closest point of the new one is 16 feet 0.4 inches. So it's improved, he's improved that setback of that retaining wall by 10 feet.
Is that correct? I'm looking at this as 16.4 versus 16.2? Is that what you're referring to?
Yes. That's what exists on the ground today.
Yeah.
What existed with the old retaining wall at its closest point down towards the pond with 6 feet 2 inches.
Okay.
Okay?
Looking at the wrong point.
So it improved the situation by approximately 10 feet. Now, the... And the new retaining wall shown on the larger Ryder and Wilcox plan is connected to the house, cemented in to the foundation to the house and extends behind the outside shower door that's open in the picture. But it's connected to the house and extends down the lot line and does not come any closer to the house, to the lot line than the existing dwelling. Mr. Chesley issued the so-called denial letter on October 25 and said that the owners needed to seek your approval through a special permit pursuant to 325-54 in order to grant relief to legitimize, so to speak, the new retaining wall with the fireplace. So that's why we're before you this evening. As I stated in the petition, we are seeking a special permit. I've explained the difference in the dimensions, the distances from the lot line for the old wall, 6 feet 2 inches in comparison to the new wall, which is 16.4 feet. The former wall was not in a good state of repair, was demolished approximately a year ago. And the new retaining wall and fireplace was constructed, but without benefit of a special permit from this Board. So we're here this evening seeking the same and following the direction of the building inspector. 325-54 is the section that calls for a special permit when you are seeking to build, to extend a structure along the same line as an existing encroachment without increasing that encroachment. And that's our argument this evening is that the new retaining wall follows the line of the existing dwelling without coming any closer to the lot line than the existing dwelling. And I think it's important to note that the former wall was connected to the dwelling, was an extension of the dwelling. The new wall is connected to the dwelling. It's an extension of the dwelling. To me, it's just as if he was asking to put a deck on. If you're asking to connect the deck to the back of that house, it's an extension of the existing dwelling. And if I may say so, I don't think the Board would have a problem if this was, if we were presenting you with an application tonight for a new deck to be constructed as an attachment to that house that didn't come any closer to the lot line. Even if it did, the Gale case would say you could come closer as long as you're intensifying an existing nonconformity because the house is not 20 feet from the lot line, so it's an existing nonconformity. We'd be intensifying it even if we came closer to the lot line, but we're not. We're following the classic example in the Howard's Bylaw that says we're following the line of an existing encroachment without increasing that encroachment. I had a case before you, a year, year and a half ago, where we had a swimming pool over an Old Mill Point, and we were extending the deck and intensifying an existing nonconformity. The swimming pool happened to be in the middle of the deck that they wanted to put in the swimming pool, but the deck was connected to that house. And this Board found without issue that that was a special permit and granted it unanimously because it was attached to the house. And this is, this, the existing retaining wall is cemented to this house, to the foundation, attached to it, as was the former retaining wall, and that we're improving the encroachment. I also submitted a letter to you on Mr. Takark's letterhead from Earth and Stone LLC, because I know this Board likes to have some, pun intended, concrete evidence of what it would cost, in this case, to jackhammer the concrete and the field stones and rebuild it would cost $78,356. This, to construct this retaining wall and this fireplace, first of all, it weighs approximately 50 tons and it costs approximately $60,000 to build such a wall. To tear it down and move it would cost in excess of $78,000, would be approximately 30 days of significant noise to the neighborhood, jackhammers and the like. And Mr. Chesley, the building inspector, refers to a section of the code or indicated to Mr. Takark, a section of code or the Bylaw that says a chimney can encroach up to 2 feet into the setback. So as far as Mr. Chesley is concerned, we would only have to be 18 feet from the lot line to conform, as opposed to 20. So if you start with 18 and you subtract off 16.4 where we're at now, you're talking about $78,000 to dismantle and jackhammer this retaining wall and fireplace to move it 1.6 feet, basically a foot and a half. So there is significant financial hardship. Not that we have to present that because we're not asking for a variance. We're asking for a special permit per the building inspector's direction. But I wanted you to know what is actually involved. This is not a little fireplace. This is a very significant item that Mr. Takark makes a living at and would be a significant, have a significant financial impact to both him and my clients, the owners, to the extent of $78,000. So our argument is that if you grant this special permit, there would not be a substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood. The immediate abutter, as I mentioned, I believe has previously filed a complaint. So it doesn't have to, the Board does not have to find that there's a detriment to just the immediate abutter. It has to be to the entire neighborhood, and it has to be a substantial detriment. Mr. Takark indicated to me that if this retaining wall and this fireplace were moved, the actual flue, the top of the chimney, which has to be a certain height to meet code so that smoke will rise high enough, the actual flue would only move 6 inches at the top. So it would not change things significantly to the abutter or to the neighborhood, even if we did move it. So my suggestion to the Board is that the Board could grant this relief because, that's requested, because there would not be a substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood if the special permit is granted. There would also be no substantial increase in noise, odors, fumes, traffic congestion or the like. It would not create a nuisance and would ask the Board to grant the special permit this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Crowell. Okay, just for the Board's benefit, not that a prior case is precedent. We always say that. But the Board has, not just in the case that Attorney Crowell cited, but in earlier case where we have a structure that's, it's a structure, it's not a dwelling unit, but it's attached. We have, as a Board, taken what I think is a justifiable and reasonable position that it is indeed part of the residential structure so we can look at it coming under 325-54, the special permit section, and also the Gale case. So I just throw that out. And I think it's, not because we've done it before, I think it makes sense where it's attached. Where freestanding, I'd argue, no. They would need a variance. But where it's physically attached, as was the prior one, I think it's a reasonable and legally justifiable position to consider that part and parcel of the dwelling. Mr. Hilliard.
Mr. Crowell, am I pronouncing it correctly?
You have it, yes.
Thank you. I missed the beginning of this about what happened and why you didn't go to the building inspector or didn't apply for a permit. Could you tell me that one again?
Mr. Takark has been building these types of structures and been in business in the Howard's area, Queen Anne Road, for about 18 years. In the past, all he's ever had to do was go to the Conservation Commission. He's never had to go for any kind of permitting to the building inspector. The issue of proximity to the boundary line, to the lot line, has not come up.
Consider it a structure in and of itself.
Yes.
So it would be under the dimensional requirements. I understand the issue. It's connected to the house.
Right.
But if it's a freestanding, it becomes a structure.
Correct. Any assembly of materials designed to give support?
So he didn't go to the building inspector and get, the building inspector didn't say you don't need a permit. He just, because it was basically, he never had to go.
Right.
Okay. And never in the past, and having done that, was never called upon by the building inspector to get relief?
No. I just wanted that clear as far as his state of mind, his intent. There was no intent to get away with anything here.
Okay. But in all other aspects, from what I'm looking at, you have conformed to the Gale case with respect that it's an extension of a pre-existing nonconforming structure.
Yes, that's our argument.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Muller.
I have no doubt that if it had come to us for a special permit before it was built, we would have approved it. I have no questions.
Mr. Donahue.
By the way, you do beautiful work.
Thank you.
Very lovely. And Mr. Crowell, I think that was West Howard's. That was a lap pool. I think that was a lap pool at that home because you discussed that.
A gentleman was here for his wife who had some MS or some severe arthritis developing in her 70s and needed to swim laps. You're exactly right, Mr. Donahue. Thank you.
Mr. Capoli.
No questions.
Mayhew. Is there any one in the public who would like to speak for or against this petition? Yes, sir. You can state your name and address.
Yep, my name is Tom Paulini, and I live next door at 112 Clearwater. I'd like to just present you with a few pictures.
Okay.
First, I'd like to say, if you look at those pictures, Mr. Crowell is right. This is a massive, massive fireplace. Second, before I start, I'd like to... This is a post facto request. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, say that again.
This is a post facto request for this special permit.
Yes.
I'd like that noted in the record.
It's already done. It's already done, Mr. Attorney Crowell.
It didn't say anywhere in the petition it's post facto. This work has already been done.
Well, I'm not sure I understand what you mean by post facto.
After the fact, this has already been constructed.
The work has been done, yes.
The work has been done. They did not come before the, either, any Board before they did this work. I've also asked the builder, he mentioned to me that he had built other fireplaces in Howard's like this and never had to go to the Building Department or anything. But he neglected to tell anybody, the Building Department or myself, where those were located. Okay? None of them, I'm sure, are located as close proximity to where I live. It's 16 feet from my lot line, 33 feet from my bedroom window. This fireplace is 15 feet high. This is not your average fireplace that people build in their backyard. They also have a fire pit and a built-in barbecue in this backyard. This will present a hazard to not only myself, but the entire neighborhood with the ash, with the possibility of, a lot of smoke, obviously, the trees, the houses in the neighborhood. I'm just, you know, the fact that they've come after they did this just kind of upsets me. It doesn't quite sit right. 20 feet is the, is what the, it should be 20 feet from the lot line. It's 16 feet 2 inches. And Mr. Crowell stated that it was something about 6 feet 2 inches from an existing wall. There was never any wall 6 feet 2 inches from my lot, ever. There was no wall attached to the house or anything like that. Very misleading information here, I think. And I think the fact that they're coming now, you know, we've always been, we've taught, we've been taught most of our lives that ignorance of the law is not an excuse. I think ignorance of regulations and rules in school or military is not an excuse. As is ignorance of city or state bylaws is definitely not an excuse. You know, people, people, for, these neighbors next door have lived here for two years. I've lived for 30 years there, okay? And for them to go ahead and build this without permission, I think, is just wrong. I mean, I just don't understand how they could do this. The, I'm very concerned with the fire hazard that this could present, being only 33 feet from my house, 16 feet from my lot line, and about, I think, 24 feet from my fence. I'm just very, very concerned, not only just for me, but for the neighborhood, the other homes in the neighborhood. And I'm just, you know, I'm very, very upset. And I'm the one, obviously, who went to the Building Department and filed a complaint on this. And I just think that this special permit or the variance, whichever one they're asking for, should be denied. The other aspect of it, I think, oh, I already noted that they have a huge fire pit as well as a built-in barbecue. I don't know why they need a 15-foot, nearly 400 cubic foot fireplace, 16 feet from my lot line. Just think of that. If any of you had a fireplace that high, that close to your home, think, you just think if you would have an objection to it. Thank you.
Sir, could you repeat your name, please?
Tom Paulini. P-A-U-L-I-N-I.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we understand your concerns, but the law says they would be entitled to a special permit unless there is a substantial hardship to the neighborhood, not just you, sir. So is there anybody else here from this neighborhood who wants to speak in opposition to this So apparently your neighbors didn't see fit to come and tell us their concerns. And I, yeah, I might not like that size either, but it's, if they were, let's say they were within the twenty feet, what difference would it make if they were back an additional, let's just see what the dimension is here, if they were back an additional...
Three and a half feet.
Three point six feet, what difference would that make? So you want to make them spend seventy-eight thousand to move it three and a half feet?
I'm not sure what difference, I'm not sure what difference it would make, but I'm just, that's my opposition to it.
Okay, I appreciate that. But again, I think the legal requirement is there would have to be substantial detriment to the neighborhood, and I don't see it. I'm not going to vote, but we'll see what the other board members have to say. Anyone else in the public want to be heard? Attorney Kroll.
Mr. Chairman, for Mr. Kroll, Crowl.
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 Rhymes with soul.
I get it. The, you mentioned that you were required to put more height on your, this fireplace?
No.
Is there a minimum, it has to be?
I did not mention that, I didn't mean to give that impression. There's certain code requirements.
Code requirements, that's what I'm referring to.
That chimney has to be certain height.
Okay.
To get the smoke and so forth.
Right, that's what I'm referring to. So is this above the height required for safety or for, so that the smoke circulates higher, or is this below? I assume it conforms to the requirement.
Yeah, so we've built it to the minimum required flue height for proper draw.
Okay, that's what I'm getting at. So you, if the owner said to you, it's too high, I want it six inches lower, you couldn't have done it?
It could be done, I would advise him that it would.
What's the regulation?
There's a regulation in the building code that requires a particular distance or height from the top of the throat of the fireplace to the top of the flue.
Okay.
It may be a little unclear whether that code actually applies to an outside one versus one that's attached, you know, like in a family room or, you know, next to the roof line of the house, but for operation, for it to work properly, it has to be built to the minimum dimension that we built it to. We didn't want it to be any taller than absolutely necessary, so we built it to the minimum dimension that would, that it would work properly. And to the point of height also, on the backside of this, on the side that faces the neighbor, it is under seven feet tall from his side. There's a big gray change, the backyard's kind of a bowl, both sides are up higher, so from the neighboring side, the total height from the ground up is around seven feet.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else in the public want to speak to this? Attorney Kroll's got something else to add?
Yes, very briefly. The neighbor stated that we did not indicate that this had already been built. My petition said the new retaining wall and fireplace were constructed without the benefit of relief from this board in paragraph, in the first paragraph of my petition. So we did state it had been constructed without relief from this board, and I believe he also stated that we didn't get any relief or any permission at all. Mr. Takak went through the Conservation Commission and got their full approval because of the proximity to the lake. Thank you.
And I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Kapoli, second.
Second.
Mr. Hilliard. Public meeting is closed. Okay, I will ask the board to state what they think on this case before we ask for a motion. Mr. Hilliard.
I mean, if I just apply what I think the law is on extension of a pre-existing non-conforming structure in this particular case, I would agree with what the chairman said. I haven't seen any evidence of a substantial detriment, is what the law says, the case law, as well as the statute, in affecting the neighborhood or the area, not necessarily any one particular home. And based on that evidence, I think that has been presented to us, it's along with the Gale case, which is, excuse me, the case that we refer to quite often, I'd be voting in favor.
Ms. Muller.
I would echo what Mr. Hilliard said, and also, out of respect for Mr. Paulini, who did show us, send us these, show us these pictures, I would just say, sir, there is no legal right to a view, and so it's unfortunate that your view has changed, but that's the way things go sometimes.
Yeah, I, I'm not going to vote, but I agree with each section 325-54 and also the Gale case. Would it prefer, if you had been in before the fact, we don't really like after the fact, but I think in this case, it's excusable. I understand your concern. When I first read it, I thought, I hate this, this is not the first time this has happened to us, not by this gentleman, but, you know, people sometimes slip up. I think, though, in this case, it's an honest mistake, and would, just one question, we have already got what looks like screening between your house and the fireplace, are those evergreens there?
No, they're just...
I'm just looking at the picture here, you're on this side, are you not, sir?
Yes.
So it looks like there's some evergreens already in there.
Yes.
Okay. Because we could put a condition in that they put a few more evergreens on your side, you would think that would help. I think that's a reasonable condition, I would, I'm not going to vote, but I would urge the board to think about a condition that they put two or three evergreens, white pines, Leland cypress, whatever.
Just a reminder, I believe we closed the public hearing.
Ah, okay. Sorry, but I did ask a question. I think I could do that, Attorney Kroll. My only response is... Mr. Donahue. It's consistent with the Gale case. I see no difficulty with it, even though it's... Mr. Kapoli.
I would echo what the rest of the board said. It's an issue with the structure, if the smoke becomes noxious, you can call the fire department. There's a very short burning season in Massachusetts, so if they're not following burning laws, that's not our department.
Ms. Mayhew.
Yeah, it seems like it qualifies. I would vote for it.
Okay, I will entertain a motion in this case, but I would urge the board to put that condition in, that there be a few evergreens in there to help the neighbor. I think that would be reasonable.
My motion is... Let's make sure I have the right case there.
Twenty eighteen thirty-four.
Yeah. To approve the special permit for the construction of a retaining wall with a fireplace incorporated therein within the setback. The application is pursuant to the Code of Town of Howard, section 325-54, parentheses two, and/or parentheses seven, and Table Two, Area Regulations, is set forth in Mass. General Laws, Chapter Forty-eight, Section Six. Property is located at 114 Clearwater Drive, MAP sixty-three, Parcel G one oh three-a, in our zoning district and its case number two thousand eighteen thirty-four, and one condition to be placed is that the, there be planted shrubs.
Why don't we say three, like, six-foot arbor bites or something, if they grow very, not arbor bites, Leland cypress, because they grow very quickly. They can stagger them, they'll be nice.
New England cypress?
Leland cypress, I would say.
Three New England cypress.
Can't do that.
Can't do it.
Concom will not approve Leland cypress.
Conservation.
We're in the zero to fifty there.
Ah, okay.
What will they approve?
I'm sorry?
What will they approve?
It would just have to be from the approved planting list. I'd have to refer to that to find out, and I can even stop into the agent.
Specify the approved planting.
Why don't you put white pines or their...
Yeah, okay, white pines are similar, no shorter than six feet at planting.
Okay, could I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Kapoli, all in favor? Opposed? Special permit granted. Thank you for your consideration, thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Kroll.
They need down conditions.
Now, this one, we're going to put the burn...
Nobody did. Nobody did except the person.
Okay. Okay, on case, excuse me, case twenty eighteen twenty-nine, which is a request to reconsider the finding of ten thirty-one eighteen. I am not going to act as chair, I wasn't here, it's a request for rehearing, there was a lot of discussion and testimony, so I'm going to ask Mr. Hilliard to once again act as chair on this particular case.
Thank you. So let me just set some of the rules that we're going to have to follow, because this is an unusual circumstance, although it's a circumstance that's allowed. This board took a vote, and it voted three to two against the applicant's request for variance. What makes that vote, final vote, is when it is recorded with the clerk of the Town of Howard. Prior to that being recorded, there was a request to have a reconsideration. A reconsideration in order to happen has to be moved by one of the people who voted in the opposite side. In this particular case, one of the people who voted against has to make the motion for reconsideration. If that motion is made and seconded, then we have a vote, the vote is the majority as to whether or not it would be reconsidered. If the majority votes reconsideration, then we are going to open up this hearing, if you will, and ask for additional information, additional facts, and so on and so forth. And when that is over, then we will take a vote, and the vote then has to be a plurality, it's got to be four out of the five, or if it's three out of two, the vote fails again. What I would ask is that because, well, first off, they're only going to be, no, we have, no, we don't. We have only four people here who sat to vote on that hearing.
That's right.
That's right. And because we have four, as a petitioner, it is your right to go forward with four, or it's your right to ask for it to be continued.
Which were the four?
One, two, three, four.
And you sat...
I sat as chair, as the acting chair, but I did not vote.
But you were here and heard the whole...
I was here and heard the whole thing.
So you could vote in this case.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I was here and heard the whole thing?
I believe that's permissible.
Yeah, I'm not saying that I can't, I don't want to make that decision without, okay.
I would agree with counsel that you're permitted, since you heard the whole hearing.
Yeah, okay. Having said that, what I would really request is those speaking in favor, those speaking against, we've heard your testimony. If you have something in addition to add, please do. I don't want to cut anyone off, but I'd appreciate it if someone's going to get up and speak to speak, and let's get evidence maybe in addition to what we already have, and then at that time, we will close the hearing and then we will vote. Okay? Everyone understand that? Any questions before we start this process?
Yes, sir. This is a motion for reconsideration, I don't...
I have to take the, I have to get the motion on the table first.
Oh, I understand. It's not my understanding that we would open up to the public for additional evidence, it's, the evidence has already been put in.
Right.
The case is already in, you have the evidence before you. All we were asking is for the board to reconsider its vote without any further public, we don't need anything else. The case is in.
Well, that may be an issue of process, one way or the other, but I, my sense is that if we've invited everyone back to open this up, what I would like to hear is anything in addition to what was testified to last month. I would just ask you, we've heard everything, I'm not, I would prefer not having anyone repeat what has already been said, because I think in order to get one more member of this board to vote in favor, I think it's up to both sides to give us some information and facts that we can consider. So based on that, do I have a motion for reconsideration?
Yes, I move to reconsider. I was voting in opposition last month. Is it appropriate for me to make a comment at this time?
It's up to you.
Having, since then reconsidered, I have revisited the property on Permakine, and I've reviewed MGL ten hardship conditions, and I believe my vote was in error.
Okay. Now we have a motion to reconsider. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor of reconsidering?
Aye.
Okay, so that's passed, so now we can start. Petitioner.
Well, thank you for the record, my name is Paul Tardif, and I appeared before you on Halloween night for this request for a variance for a retaining wall for a septic system.
Yep.
And I'm not going to go through everything all over again.
We have all the facts.
The, and you also, I believe I addressed the letter to Mr. Ryer, but it was also addressed to all the members of the board, I hope you've received that. Our request respectfully is merely to ask the board to reconsider the vote for the purpose that we believe that there was some misinformation provided, that we be given an opportunity to correct that information, and that the board reconsider its vote based on that. Very limited to what was in our letter. The main thing was that my client is purchasing two lots from Mr. Rossini, who's the owner of the property, who's also here tonight. One of those lots is being considered, and that was the lot that was presented to the Conservation Commission, the Board of Health, and to this board. The fact that there exists a second lot that will be purchased means nothing to this petition. There's been never, there's never been a merger of those lots, there's no intention to merge them, there's no plan that shows them separately. I believe that you were shown a Google Maps plan, I believe that's what it was, I wasn't shown a copy, but I could see it, which showed it as one. Attached to our letter, we did show you the current Howard Assessors map that does show it separately. In fact, these two lots appear on two separate plans with two separate parcel numbers. Parcel twenty-four eight seventeen is the house lot, the other lot is on MAP thirty-three, parcel G three dash three, that's what it was handwritten onto that plan. The second thing was, there was some consideration about whether or not the septic system, the, actually, the leaching field, could be located on this separate parcel. It was never there for consideration, the Board of Health didn't consider it because it wasn't presented that way, and there was some question by a member of the board that maybe the septic system could be located on that parcel to serve the house on this parcel. It was, there was a representation made by me that that entire parcel is within one hundred feet of wetland, and therefore, there is no way the Board of Health would ever permit a septic system to be located there, and we stand by that position. The Board of Health has issued a memorandum dated November fourteenth that I received, and I'm not sure how this came to be, but basically, they wanted to sharpen their position that I cannot see another location on the lot where the septic system could be relocated to and still meet the required setbacks.
Okay. Do we have that?
Yes, that was part of what I set out.
Okay.
And I'm not sure if there was anything from the Conservation, if it was requested by the Conservation, if they had any, because I don't know, I didn't receive anything, I have to assume that there was none.
There's not anything additional.
And it's for those reasons that we're asking for reconsideration.
Thank you.
That's it.
Is there anyone in the public who wishes to speak?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Attorney David Reed, I represent John and Leaky Collins, who are the abutters at fifty-two Permakine. They spoke with you last time and addressed you, and I respect your comment, Mr. Chairman, we will not repeat what has already been said. I would like to address the issue of the relationship between these two pieces of property, because that seems to be the...
Between which, I'm sorry? The relationship between which?
These two pieces of property, the two lots.
Okay.
Because that is the central issue that has caused... I would like to address the issue of the relationship between these two pieces of property, because that seems to be the-
Between which? I'm sorry. The relationship between which?
These two pieces of property, the two lots.
Okay.
Because that is the central issue that has caused the request for the reconsideration. The suggestion has been made in the letter that there was misstatements of facts that were presented to you at the last hearing. I've viewed the videotape of that hearing. I was not present. I, I'm baffled as to what is alleged to have been misstated, or misinterpreted, or mis-presented to you. When I first reviewed this file, which was prior to your last hearing, incidentally, I noticed what I thought to be a glaring misunderstanding or discrepancy within the plans and the petition. I'd like to present to you, if I may, Mr. Chairman, just a few documents, most of which are already in your file, but which I've highlighted to bring attention to several points along the way, if I may.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The discrepancy that I'll refer to is on that first page, in the, what I refer to is a zoning comparison chart-
Mm-hmm.
...where the applicant lays out the zoning requirements and the existing and proposed conditions. And in particular, under the lot area, the applicant indicates that the lot that they're asking you to consider contains forty-two thousand three hundred and twenty-four square feet of area. I looked at the plan that was presented to you, and that didn't seem to fit. The plan that was presented to you appeared quite a bit smaller than that. So I went to the subdivision plan for the property, which was referenced in the application. The subdivision plan is the second page that I presented you this evening. Lot seventeen, the lot that they're now asking you to consider, is only twenty-one thousand ninety-one square feet, not forty-two three twenty-four. So I checked the assessor's records, and that in fact showed that lot seventeen, H seventeen, which is the lot referenced in the application, is in fact listed as having forty-two thousand three hundred and twenty-four square feet, almost double what's listed on the subdivision plan. I checked with your assessor to find out why that was the case. The assessor wrote back to me, and that's the fourth page that I presented to you, indicated that in fact Mr. Orsini owned two adjoining lots, and that since two thousand and five, they had been combined and assessed as one lot for the last thirteen years. He's received tax bills assessing both parcels as one piece of property, as one lot. That shouldn't be surprising. You're all familiar with the doctrine of merger of properties. In fact, the law requires that whenever there are undersized lots adjoining each other in common ownership, they are required to be treated as one for zoning purposes. This lot has been in common ownership with the lot seventeen, which is the small lot subject to the file, the plan that was presented to you, since two thousand and two, sixteen So I went back and looked again at the application and the purchase and sale agreement appended to it, to try and figure out why we have this discrepancy. If you look at the next page that I presented to you, Addendum A from the purchase and sale agreement, one of the conditions for the purchase of this lot is that the buyer is able to get a land surveyor to prepare one perimeter plan showing a total acreage of forty-two thousand three hundred and twenty-four square feet. That's the combined total of lot seventeen and the adjoining lot Mr. Orsini owns, which is lot three on a separate plan. All indications from the assessors to the application itself, to the purchase and sale agreement of the applicant, indicate that these two lots are to be treated and have been treated as one. The application, the assessment, the purchase and sale agreement itself, there is no reason for you to consider lot seventeen, which is twenty-one thousand ninety-one square feet, separate and apart from the adjoining piece of property. You cannot, in my opinion, that they are merged as a matter of law. Incidentally, I also came across a listing agreement for the property, which I've appended to it, and it was advertised as one lot of forty-two thousand three hundred and twenty-four square feet in area. Why in the world would you consider half of the property when you try hearing application for a variance and not the whole piece of property? Now, I don't know if the addition of over twenty thousand square feet to this property would make a difference in terms of their ability to comply, but I respectfully submit that you don't either, because you haven't even seen a plan that combines them. And I don't know how the applicant can contend to you that they need a variance because they're unable to comply when they haven't even tried to comply, when there's no consideration of the adjoining piece of property in their submission to you, or for that matter, to the Health Department of the Conservation Commission. Maybe Mr. Tardif is correct. Maybe they can't put the leach field on that long, narrow strip because of its proximity to the bog and the wetlands. But maybe they can put the house a little further to the right, because as you can see from their own plan, the house is not required to stay a hundred feet from the wetland. It only has to stay outside the fifty-foot requirement. And the majority of the land adjoining lot seventeen, according to their plan, is outside the fifty-foot limit, but not outside the hundred foot. So it's eligible for construction of the home on some or all of that adjoining piece. And maybe that frees up enough space on the primary lot to shift the leach field from where it is to a conforming location. But you don't know that, because they haven't tried to do that yet, and they haven't presented you any evidence that they've tried to do that. Now, you have a comment from your health agent indicating that according to her best judgment, there's no other location on the lot where the septic leaching field could be put in compliance with Title V's setback requirements. But the last page I've given you is the plan to which she refers, and the lot that she's referring to is lot seventeen, twenty-one thousand ninety-one square feet. This is not a comment upon what could be done with the adjoining piece attached, because the Health Department has not reviewed, or at least appears not to have been asked to review, the combined merged properties as one unified lot. The fact that there's no other place on the twenty-one thousand square foot lot to put a leaching field doesn't mean that the addition of the, of the extra twenty thousand plus square feet might not relieve the ability to put the leaching field someplace else or the need for the variance as requested. There simply is not a presentation made to you that justifies your ignoring the adjoining piece of property. And there certainly was no impropriety or no misstatement made by my clients in presenting that information to you last month. In fact, if there's any impropriety at all, it was not showing all of the property on one plan to begin with. You absolutely should have had that information, and you absolutely were correct in considering it. And there is no basis without that for you to grant a variance. The applicant cannot demonstrate to you based upon only looking at lot seventeen that they are presently unable to comply, or that there is any hardship that causes them not to be able to comply. The hardship that was brought to your attention is the existence of the adjoining wetlands, and their, the need to stay for the leaching field at least a hundred feet from them. But that's not anything that is unique to this property. Every property in this area is subject to that same setback and that same condition. It's a very, it's a prevalent dominant feature of this neighborhood, is the existence of these wetlands. There's nothing in them that especially affects this property. Now, this lot does have, perhaps uniquely, an interior isolated wetland, but that's not the reason they can't comply. The Conservation Commission has given the dispensa, excuse me, dispensation from them. They've allowed them to build anyway. So that, while it may be unique, it's not a hardship. It's gone, as far as they're concerned. There simply isn't a basis for a variance here, and there certainly was no impropriety in you considering this adjoining lot. In fact, I think you must consider it as part of this property. It has merged for all purposes, and certainly for zoning purposes. And I would urge you not to change your vote and to deny the requested variance. Let the applicant come back with another plan that shows all the property and genuinely try to find out whether they can do better than what they have done here. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak with additional information than what we've already heard? Additional information?
With the zone-
Something we haven't heard already.
So, if you would indulge me for just one moment. There was something stated-
Please go to the mic and introduce yourself.
My name is Claire Collins. I am speaking on behalf of my parents, John Collins and Aleiki Collins, owners of the property of fifty-two Permackene Lane. Begging the Zone, the Zoning Board's indulgence, I would like to just respond briefly to a statement that was made in the letter for reconsideration that was sent to the board as I believe it pertains to my personal status. As many of you know, I am a member of the Massachusetts Bar. Sorry. Here it is.
Take your time. Okay.
In, in the letter requesting reconsideration, Mr. Tardif stated that there is no doubt that the application was certainly influenced by misinformation stated, but not supported by the abutters who owned the property at fifty-two Permackene. In particular, again without factual support, the abutters contended that an adjacent separate parcel of land was actually part of the subject parcel, and so on through that sentence. In my interpretation of that statement, they are alleging that myself, who introduced this potential issue, provided misinformation or stated something without factual basis to this board, i.e., that I lied. I would like it stated on the record that I made my statements in good faith and that I did not present any misinformation. I only presented that which was available to me through the materials submitted by the petitioner, specifically the point of sale agreement, and information that was available to me through the Harwich website, i.e., publicly available information, as I stated before, as a lawyer. Allegations that I lied to an administrative agency could cause potential harm to my reputation. I believe that these allegations are false and indeed spurious. And furthermore, it was not outside the purview of the Zoning Board to consider the information as presented to them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Tardif, would you like to respond to Attorney Reed?
I would. Thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, the application was prepared in accordance, when I prepare these applications, first thing I do is I get these assessor records. And this one is for parcel, from map twenty-four, parcel H seventeen. Whether the assessor's office has combined lots or not, Mr. Reed is very aware of this as well. The assessor's records do not, or the assessor does not combine lots. That is not their purview.
Okay.
That is either to be done by the property owner or by operation of law. And there's one person that determines that, and that is the billing commissioner.
Okay.
Well, we got to deny a letter. Okay, we submitted the plan that you have for you with one lot. We got to deny a letter from the billing commissioner who reviewed that plan, and he asked us to come to this board for the purpose, for the purpose of the retaining wall for that septic system, and nothing else. This lot was legal when it was created back in, I believe it was nineteen eighty-four, March of eighty-four. It met the zoning requirements for the time. It is grandfathered. It stays single until it is merged together. The listing agreement by a realtor does not merge lots. If that was the implication, that's incorrect. They're probably taking the same information off of the tax assessor's records, which put them together. It doesn't mean that this is a separate, that this is a merged lot with the other lot at all. In fact, your tax maps still show them as separate. So that was accurate.
Do you get a separate tax bill for each so-called lot?
We don't, I haven't, we haven't purchased it. Mr. Orsini still owns it.
Oh, okay. All right.
I, I will assume that this means that he gets one tax bill-
Okay.
-for this property. But we've submitted this as one lot.
Yes.
That was what we submitted to all the boards consistently with the same plan, never merging them. These are what was approved by the, sorry, by the Conservation Commission Board of Health and this board. This is, this is the plan that we submitted to this board for consideration. And whether or not you have forty thousand square feet, or twenty thousand square feet, or twenty-one thousand square feet, really is not germane to the issue of where this septic system is located. This septic system is located there for a purpose.
I have a question. This application says forty-two thousand feet. That's forty-two thousand square feet.
Yes, sir.
And you signed it?
Correct.
So you merged the lots, if the lot's only twenty-one thousand, how do you put down forty-two thousand on the application?
Because I'm consistent with this town's assessor's records. And if, just by signing, an application does not merge lots.
I, I'm not saying you merge lots in a legal sense, but I think there's a lot of smoke and mirrors here. What, we keep running around this issue?
Let's, let's do it a different way. Let's do it a different way.
If your application says forty-two thousand feet, then you clearly are considering both together.
I'm not considering both together. I'm just giving you what the assessor's records require, because if I put down twenty-one thousand square feet on that application, and this is readily available to all the board members, and it says forty-two thousand square feet, I'm going to get the same question the other way.
Well, but you can imagine the appearance of impropriety or half-truths or the smell test.
Well-
Mr. Tardif, I have a question about this, because as it happened, my husband and I bought a house in Harwich in two thousand nine, was registered as being on two lots. We received for the first couple of years, two tax bills, even though our house straddled the two lots. We went to some effort and legal expense to have it merged as one lot. Thereafter, we received only one tax bill.
Yes.
I'd like to hear Mr. Orsini tell us, has he been receiving two tax bills right up through last year for two separate lots?
While he's coming up, could I just address that? That's a, that's a little-
That's my question. Because I remember asking you last month, specifically, could the house not be shifted to the right so the septic system could be shifted? Because the existence of the other lot, which were now seems to be one lot, and I, it was rebuffed without a straight answer.
The proposed bedroom, a proposed house, as you see it on this plan, you can see it's an L shape.
Mm-hmm.
You can see where the work line limit is located. If we were to shift that house anywhere and it would go over that line, I don't believe the Board of Health would have approved this plan, nor the Conservation Commission would have approved this plan.
Mr. Orsini, how many tax bills have you received, did you receive for this house, for two thousand eight, for this property for two thousand eighteen?
Rocco Orsini. I'm the owner of fifty-six Permackene. When I purchased the lot, I received one tax bill. When I, when I bought the second lot, I received two tax bills. And I went to the taxpayer to pay my bill one year, and the taxpayer says to me, Mr. Orsini, for convenience, do you mind if we combine the lots for the tax bill, so I don't have to send out two tax bills? And I said, sure, go ahead. So in the beginning, I did get two tax bills, but then with the agreement with the tax collector, she combined them, and they now send me one tax bill. But on the tax bill in January, it's broken out. It shows the two pieces separate. So I started with one tax bill, came to an agreement with the tax collector to combine them, but legally I never brought the properties together, like you suggested. You did that, you and your husband? You hired a lawyer?
We had the opposite experience-
Yes.
-that we were, we had to make the effort. The tax assessor could not do that for us. We had to do it and register with the Barnstable County.
Right, because you wanted one, one parcel, one tax bill.
Right. Right.
I elected to leave them separate.
Let me just intercede for a second. It's just a matter, it's a legal issue, which I'm not even sure is relevant here, but legal issue is if you, the same owner owns two parcels, both of which are non-conforming, or one of which is non-conforming, but both of which are non-conforming owned by the same person or entity, as a matter of law, they merge. Just by saying that doesn't mean anything because nobody comes up to you and gives you a deed that shows one big lot.
Right.
Doctrine of merger. Towns pick it up sometimes within a year and sometimes they never pick it up. But from a legal perspective on the doctrine of merger, if you were to apply for a special permit to say, "Well, I want to do this on my, on, you know, my lot that is smaller than it should be," then the issue comes up, well, it's merged. Now it's, it's one lot. But I'm not sure of the relevancy to this here, but that's the issue.
I answered your question.
I think it's relevant in terms of the application. Is the application for a lot of 42,000 square feet or is it for a lot of 21,000 square feet?
Because the plans are based on a 21,000 square foot lot. So if we did actually consider it on the 42,000 square foot lot as typed into their application, there are more applications.
We can talk about this when we close the hearing. Go ahead.
My question is this. The scenario is this, assuming that these lots, just assuming that they're together, and you saw 42,000 on this application, would your vote be different?
It would be different because then I would have, I would know that you presented this big piece of land to the Conservation Committee, to the Building Department, to all these different departments, and then they could have said, "Oh, yeah, we could switch it over here." And then we don't put this retaining wall in, which causes a gully, which is at the bottom of a steep hill, which is going to run right into those very sensitive wetlands right there. I don't know if you're familiar with them. I live on the other side. I've been walking them since I was walking.
The gully's there now.
I know there's a gully there now, but you're going to increase and intensify what would happen. You're going to create a bigger gully where their driveway is, where you want to put the septic system, and you're going to lose the benefit of the wetlands, which do what they do. They filter water and road debris and salt and things like that. You're just going to be making a highway for all that crap that drains off the road to come right into those bogs.
You have a 20-foot retaining wall, that's 20-foot wide retaining wall. I don't know of any evidence that would cause it to do that. It's still going to drain the water off the road, it's still going to be in that gully, and it's still going to drain where it goes.
If you didn't have that wall there and you were able to put the house in the septic system over here, it's going to leave more natural habitat for the water to naturally drain into.
That's an issue for the Conservation Commission.
It is, but I think we're being presented half-truths here. And so they can't come before us and say we have clean hands, we did everything we could, because had they presented it properly to all the departments, they, they could have gotten an engineer, they could have gotten an architect in there and said...
I think we have to act on what they presented to us and that...
If we find it...
Go ahead, Mr. Tardif.
And, you know, with regard to Ms. Collins' comments, misrepresentation isn't, we didn't call her a liar. You know, you made a representative, you made a comment about, you know, the smell test. I don't consider you to call me a liar, okay?
No, absolutely not.
So we're just trying to get through this.
I'd like to hear an explicit statement about Ms. Collins' reputation.
Well, I don't know her. I've never worked with her. I just, my first experience with her was at the last hearing, and the representation by her was that these lots were merged. And it's our position that it's not. So ours is contrary to her position. I didn't call her a liar. I don't know her.
She also didn't represent herself as an attorney at the last hearing. She represented herself as speaking on, as a daughter on behalf of her parents.
No. So, but this lot, this second lot, is really the sticking point, except that there's nothing that can be done with this lot. And I have someone today who can tell you about that.
Hi, Lynn Hamlin. I own Hamlin Consulting. I'm a wetland scientist, and I've been doing environmental permitting on Cape Cod for over 30 years. I took this project through the Conservation Commission. I delineated the wetland resource areas on this project. Couple of points. Whether or not it is a 21,000 square foot lot, or whether it's a 40,000 square foot lot, that additional square footage, which abuts the easterly side of this property, you can, I assume that you can see that separately in your own documents up there. That entire lot is either wetland or within 100 feet of the wetland, and you can easily see that from my wetland flag BBW or edge of wetland one. The whole lot is within the buffer zone of the Conservation Commission and would be excluded from being a location to put the septic system.
How about the house?
Well, what happens with the house, this was, this was a really interesting case. It's one of the most interesting cases I've worked on. Because of the nature of the wetland edge configuration, if you look at it, you get the widest buffer area on the southerly property line. So the wetland extends further to the property edge or further to the significant wetland to the north of it. As you move toward the northeast, the wetland comes in closer to the cul-de-sac. So you're pinching the available upland as you move to the northeast. In order to fit the house in and maintain the 50-foot buffer, we were calling it to the wetland proper. This hole here is actually a borrow pit from when they used to use the wetlands in the back as a cranberry bog, an active cranberry bog. However, if you dig a big hole and you don't maintain it in your cranberry production, it fills with natural vegetation. I won't give you the whole story of it because you're here already almost at quarter to ten tonight. Suffice it to say that the Conservation Commission saw their way to grant Mr. Orsini an order of conditions. They had granted him one prior, that because of erroneous information, he thought was still alive. He was guided incorrectly by the Conservation Commission. They righted that wrong and granted him another permit, and he also has a state permit. Worrying about the road runoff pitching into a gully and draining into the wetland, if you look at the contours along the cul-de-sac, the rain collects in front of this other lot. It's a 40-foot wide lot that shares the easterly property line, then extends back to become part of the wetland. So the road runoff, Mr. Orsini is actually, without benefit of our permit or our town's permit, his property is collecting the road runoff for the whole road. If you look at all dumps around Contour 12 and dumps right on that extra Lot 3. So you get a free road drainage area on his, part of the lot, or the second lot on Lot 3. Even if you were to read, well, we have a problem, we have a problem with the front property line setback, we have a problem with the wetland configuration, and this house has been designed a number of times to strictly fit in the space that's allowable to maintain the setbacks from property lines and the wetlands to provide a 50-foot buffer, which is pretty much what they preferred to do, and they preferred to sacrifice the man-made hole depression that was here. No matter where you put this house, even if you could move it, you can't configure the septic system. You have to have a three-bedroom septic system under Title V. This is the highest area, this is the area, the only area that provides 100 feet from the wetland. The Board of Health does not entertain any variances whatsoever with new construction. You can't ask them for one. They have never given one. I don't see them changing that, that policy. As it is, a little bit of our wall extends over the 50-foot buffer, but that's, over the 100-foot buffer, but that's okay, they allow that. So these wetlands are still, these wetland delineations are accurate and alive under an existing approval. We were really careful to fit a project in the only allowable space that, that you can, whether you consider this as one lot or two lots. The second lot is not available for building area and provides road drainage. That's where all the road drainage goes.
Question. So, did you present that information, including both lots, to the Conservation Commission? Or is this just your...
Well, we did talk about the road drainage. I mean, that did come up in those proceedings. I, we can use the delineation that was done for this property because as a tangent, it extends over into the other property. No, I, we didn't, we didn't present it as two lots, we presented it as one lot, but because enough information was provided and shown on the plan, you can see that it would, the buffer zone, the whole lot is in the buffer zone.
And if this was a two-bedroom house instead of a three-bedroom house, would the septic wall need to be built?
It would, it would be shorter, but it would still need a wall. It would be just shorter, lengthwise.
If I may, is it your opinion of that, even if both of these lots were merged as one, that the only place, considering the wetlands and the intrusion on the 100-foot buffer and so on and so forth, that this house couldn't be sighted anywhere else than where it is?
Yes, yes, Mr.
Okay. In what percentage, if you know, of the second lot, this long peninsula, is considered to be wetland? What percentage?
Well, I was trying to figure that out as I was sitting there waiting. This is, I'm trying not to, actually, it's right here. I think a significant part of it, I didn't go through the wetland to get on the other side. I just did the edge closest to the project area I was working on, so I don't want to misrepresent.
And what, how much of that would be, would affect where the house would be placed if, again, we were looking at a 42,000 square foot lot as opposed to a 21?
Well, it's only 40 feet wide, so you're only getting 40 feet more, and you're getting pinched as you move. So you can't really, and meet those, because it's a cul-de-sac, now you have to meet this front setback off the cul-de-sac as you wrap around. So you're not getting any benefit of any side, we do side setbacks. So you're being pushed from the front and you're being pinched from the back. So I, I, because, also because it's an L shape, and actually the house part, it's the garage, it's a garage under, is the thinner part.
Mm-hmm.
You can't, you can't slide this house any further than where it is because the wetlands come closer.
Okay. And, if I may, Mr. Reed, if to be shown that 42,000 square foot lot, merged lot, could not cite the house anywhere else but where it is, does that make a difference with your opposition?
It makes a difference to the question of reconsideration, but it still doesn't make a difference to my suggestion to you that the hardship that they have relied upon...
That's a, we can, that's a different issue.
Well, you asked me if it would make a difference to the variance, I thought.
Yeah.
So, yes, it would.
Okay.
Okay. May I, while I'm, I'm sorry, while I'm up, I had a couple of other comments, whether you want them now or later.
Go ahead.
As you pointed out, Mr. Chairman, the question of merger of lots is a question of law. It does not happen necessarily at the conscious choice of the owner. It may, if someone has lots that they wish to merge or wish to get one tax bill for instead of two. But it's not dependent upon that. The question of merger is whether there is additional land, adjoining land, in common ownership that is available to lessen the nonconformity of the lot. This lot is nonconforming by area, among other things. This land is available to lessen or eliminate the nonconformity of this lot. There is no question in my mind that they have long ago merged as a matter of law. The fact that no one has addressed that issue doesn't change the fact. I would also last, just, just comment, or ask, I guess. Should you be making a decision on a variance by sitting here and speculating about what may or may not be done with another piece of property, almost exactly the same size as the one you're talking about, doubling the size? How do we know that that doesn't present any other possibilities?
You're right. Thank you. Do you have anything else, Mr. Tardif?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
My eyes tell me that I can't use this for any type of construction. It's 40 feet wide between my front yard setback and my rear setback and all the wetlands and the buffer zone from the wetlands. There is nothing I can do with that piece of land. I cannot put a structure on it. I can, there's nothing that could go there.
I'm not speaking for the board, but I'm going to make a suggestion before we close this hearing. We have voted to reconsider it, and we've had a hearing open. And that suggestion, you can accept it or not, is that you may want to go back, have an engineer site, show us that if you use the 42,000 square feet, where you could best cite the house. Now, I realize the issue is they're not going to get rid of the retaining wall, but that seems to be a problem around this table that, that we didn't get a chance, and you haven't presented any technical information to us, where that house could be best cited. You could very well come back and an engineer can say, "This is the only place it can go." And then we can act on that.
If the board is of the opinion and agrees that the retaining wall is going to have to be where it is...
Well, we, that's not our choice.
Correct.
As to where it is, that's...
If, we just heard from Lynn Hamlin...
Yes.
Who said that that retaining wall and that septic system has to be located there for this project. We didn't get relief for the house because we didn't need relief from the house. The Board of, the Billing Department said we didn't need that.
Yeah.
So if, if, even if the house were to be moved, Lynn Hamlin indicates that septic system's going to be there with a, with a retaining wall. So nothing's going to change.
Right, I agree with you.
So the variance is still going to be needed for that.
Right.
And if that's the only thing that's before this board, I don't see what going back and repositioning or exploring the possibility of repositioning a house will do to that.
I agree with that completely. I really think that that's an important point, is that this is only for the retaining wall.
That's correct.
And we can't...
Not for the house, it's for the retaining wall.
Right, and so that's what this application is for, I believe, right? So...
But the house is by right.
The house is by right.
But if they can't put a septic system in, then they can't have a house. And they have to prove that there's some sort of, you know, unique situation to this piece of land.
It is unique.
It absolutely is not unique.
But there's pottery of it.
I live, I live, I don't know, less than a quarter mile as a crow flies. Every single house that is around that bog has the same issues. It's not unique to that neighborhood, it's not unique to Harwich Port. There's no way you're going to convince me that this piece of land is unique. We have so many bogs in Harwich that it affects not only this neighborhood, but the whole town.
But all the other lots are shaped totally differently. This one has the encroachment from the back.
My lot looks something like that.
Okay, but you have it at Rome.
Yeah, but, and the wetlands are back here, so you need to...
But how big's your lot?
1.343 acres.
Where's your lot on this map?
It's on the other side.
Mr. Tardif, my...
I'm just, I'm just saying, it's up to you.
I'm not going to rehash the zoning requirements. I think we've met all of them. I think that the, the issue is the wall around the septic system.
Well, the issue is the wall, period. I believe, however, that there is a sense around this board, and I'm only saying this to your opinion, is that you have the opportunity to, to withdraw without prejudice right now and come back to us with a plan. I'm, you know, I'm not telling you to do that.
No. Yeah, I, I thank you for that. I appreciate that, but I'd like to go to a vote on this.
I'm not really part of this, but I'm sitting here, so I'd like, with your permission, to make one comment.
Of course.
Okay, I've heard it all. I don't, you know, I just have what's in front of me tonight, that your letter and Attorney Reed's documents, so I don't have anything but these little plans. But listening to the testimony of the environmental expert, this lot is not usable without a retaining wall.
Right.
To me, that meets the legal requirement for variance.
This is...
Because, wait, let me finish, Mike. This lady said that no matter whether it's a two-bedroom house, or I assume even a one-bedroom house, if it's going to have a septic system, it has to have a retaining wall, meaning without the variance, the lot's not usable for a reasonable purpose, i.e., residential and residential zone. I think prima facie, that meets the requirement for a variance.
Mr. Chairman, this is a woman who is paid to be here by the... Well, she's an expert, I mean, she's an expert, but she's, she's testifying for this side.
No, don't go there. Wait a minute, she came before the board and offered legitimate testimony.
Who, who's she?
You have something to counter her factually, okay.
It goes to the weight of her evidence. Who is she working for?
She's an expert, and we've, he's brought in an expert who's a professional, who's looked at the property, who's testified already before the Conservation Commission. So we take her testimony only... So we take her testimony only against other expert testimony in the resounding. So we, we have to weigh her testimony against anything else we have.
She has a bias, we, we are able to.
Why, because she's being paid by them?
I'm an attorney, I pay experts all the time to give me opinions I want, that's what I'm saying.
All right.
Anyway, that's all I had to say.
She's been working on this property for over 10 years. She's seen it from the beginning to the end.
I've been, you know, almost four decades.
Okay, so. Anything further? Yes, sir.
Again, Rocco Orsini, I just want to make a short statement. Because I've been out of this loop because I've thought everything was going fine. But I just want you to know, I want you to put yourself in my shoes, that I've gone through a tremendous process to get where we are today. I spent over two years with lawyers, environmental consultants, going before the Conservation Commission. I spent a lot of money doing alternatives. The commission ordered me to do alternatives. We did all the alternatives, signed off, everything was approved, okay? So two years I spent, and I finally got it approved. Health Department approved, Building Department approved. I feel I have three hardships. The first hardship was getting through Conservation, all right? I mean, they were tough. But I'm an environmentalist, and I wanted to do things right. My second hardship is where the septic location is. They boxed this into a corner, we, we can't move. I, I couldn't even move the house, okay? We tried to switch the house, different designs, L-shaped, period, okay? That's my second. My third hardship is the money. My wife and I are senior citizens. I got $150,000 in this property, between what I paid for it, the taxes I paid on it, the lawyers, the consultants, you know, we're on fixed incomes. I mean, I just can't afford to throw away $150,000. So if this variance is not approved, okay? I'm, I'm sitting with an unbuildable piece of land. And I sit here and say, you know, I did everything right. I followed all the rules, I paid all the money, and I say, please walk in my shoes. Thank you.
Did you have something to say?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to assure, just to kudo, that the, that this project was peer-reviewed by a consultant that the Conservation Commission hired. Just wanted to have a comprehensive file on their part, who concurred with the delineation and the project and my analysis of the value of the property. So I just wanted that on the record.
Thank you. No further questions? Go forward, motion to close the hearing?
I think a motion to close the hearing.
Second?
Second.
All in favor to close the hearing?
Aye.
Okay. So, let's hear what people are thinking, because we're going to take a vote on it. We'll start with you, Megan.
I think I already said, I mean, I think it totally falls under variance. There's obviously a hardship based on the shape of the lot, the topography. I don't see, I don't see how we can't grant the variance. It's for the wall only. It's got nothing to do with where the house is, it has nothing to do with conservation. This is just for the, the wall. And I think it would be unwise to not grant it, because it seems to be an extensive hardship, this particular lot.
Okay. Mr. Capoli?
No. Had they been forthright, full candor to Conservation Commission and every other commission about the existence of the other lot, and had put the plans forward in that manner, so that all of the other departments that they went through, and I don't deny that they went through a lot of trouble getting there, but they should have been truthful and, and put all the.
What's your opinion on whether or not they meet the criteria for a variance?
They do not. I do not believe that this hardship affects this property any more than it affects every other property around that bog, and every bog in Harwich. The, the soil, topography, et cetera, is, is just not different. And I, if we go into the Gale case, I believe that.
Not the Gale case.
But just using the.
I get it.
It's, it's going to be substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, I believe, as it's being proposed, which is why I think that it should be withdrawn and sent back, using the entire two pieces together. Because we can have people make representation to us, representations to us all night long, but they're guessing.
Professionals aren't guessing, that's why she's here.
They did all this work, assuming they were going to use just this one piece. So to, to come in tonight and say, "Well, you know, we could add this other piece, but I don't really think it would make much of a difference."
I think that was added as a point, to make the point that if it was added, it still wouldn't matter.
Well, then, then they could have and should have added it throughout the whole permitting process and not dropped it on us last month.
They don't have to, it's a separate lot, they don't have to.
Mr. Donahue.
Yes, they did.
No.
I think the petitioner has made a very good case. I think the lot, whether it was 42,000 square feet, square feet of 21,000 square feet, it fits onto that 21,000 square feet. And the wall, as Ms. Mahew had said, is the entire crux of this. And it appears as though, yes, that wall is needed to build that home. So I stand.
Thank you.
In favor.
Kathleen?
One thing is not clear to me, whether this is one lot or two lots. I don't think any amount of conversation here is going to resolve that. I'm willing to go forward based on the fact that the bylaw requires 40,000-square-foot lot area, and the total thing is 42,000 square feet. Two things are clear to me, that these two ladies have wrongly, their integrity has wrongly been impugned. And I think they are both being as honest as they can be in the things that they said, Ms. Collins last month, and this lady this month. The third thing that's clear to me is that this is a financial and topographical hardship, and that I would vote yes.
Okay. Looking specifically at the law and what we're required by law to find, that first off, we're talking about a wall, we're not talking about a house. And because we're talking about a wall, the question is, can we put the wall where it's being requested to be put in conformity with the variance under the statute? And it has to do with specifically relating to the soil or the topography. And that's the reason where the wall is going where it's going, and it can't go any other place. It affects the land structures that we're dealing with. And despite, there's no other testimony telling us that this is not unique. The only testimony I see in plans and what we've, we've heard so far is that it is specific just to this piece of land and to nothing else. And clearly, there'd be a substantial hardship. Substantial, meaning no one's going to build on this lot because of a wall that's being required by a governmental enterprise that has no control over, or has no control with respect to the owner. Based on that, I would vote yes, grant you the variance. Okay. Motion?
Please.
Want me to make the motion?
Yes.
All in favor?
Yes.
Let me, let me read the motion. The motion is variance, case number 2018-29, and this was a request to reconsider the finding. We have voted in favor of the request to reconsider the finding, and we are about to vote on the finding. We all understanding that? Okay. And the motion is to allow for variance to construct a 3'8" retaining wall within the setback of a leaching field of an approved septic plan. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, Section 325, Table 2. Area regulations as set forth in Mass. General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 10. The property is located at 56 Permackin Lane, MAP 24, Parcel H17, in the RR Zoning District. A5 Member Board voted for, we haven't voted yet, yes, we have, voted 4 to 1 to approve the request.
Now you vote.
Oh, we have to vote first.
You have to vote. Yeah.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Raise your hand so I can see.
Opposed.
Sorry, can we raise hands for four? Can we raise hands for four, please, so I can see?
We're approving, I'm approving.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you, Jim, for sharing that. Very difficult.
Good job, Jim. Did you get a twofer, we can have both shoulders?
Can I get a quick motion to approve the minutes from the October 31st meeting?
Who?
Second? Second?
Do I get everybody voting to approve the minutes? There you go.
Aye.
We are meeting next month on the 16th, I believe it is, so it's an early meeting, before Christmas.
And how many cases do we have?
Or is it the 19th?
A lot.
We have a lot?
We have, we have six, I think, yeah.
How many?
What?
I have a question. This kitchen issue's come up, I think, the last three months.
We're going to have to discuss it next month.
Wait, wait, one at a time, let's first get the cases.
I'm staying home. Now, but where were you going and when?
I'm sorry, it's the 19th, so we're on for the 19th. We have six cases.
Six cases, the 19th. Are you not going to be here?
Would you say that again now?
December 19th.
I have it on my calendar, it's December 4.
Nope.
We, we, you're talking about next year, you wrote it, and this is 2019.
We're having a combined meeting. For this year, 2018, we're meeting on the 19th. Is there anybody that will not be here?
Questionable, I have a trial in Salem, so.
Send me an email, please, I hate this.
Okay, just a point of order going forward. Mr. Capoli, if we have an issue, we've got to be polite. And if you want credentials, you can ask for them. Please don't attack on the public TV the speaker. You know, there's a way to do it. You could ask for a PRC, you could ask for her, you know, list her credentials, no problem with that. Okay? Going forward.
By association, that impugns the credibility of.
The whole board.
Expert, expert witnesses whom you might hire, Mike.
I hire expert witnesses, and if they don't give you the opinion I want, I go and hire another one. That's how it works.
Okay, but did you hear what I said?
I didn't.
If you want to be a member of the board, you're going to ask appropriately. And if not, I'll ask for your removal. It's that simple, okay? Because that was totally inappropriate. Okay, we had talked a lot about the kitchen and everything. The town is, as we know, working on this very subject, so they're not going to toughen it. My feeling is, at least for the present, we ought to go with the Health Department. Definition and put a condition in that they don't have those items if it's not to be a kitchen.
Now, those items, I think, is it just a stove? Are those items, because?
It was oven, stove, range top, or built-in microwave.
Microwave is allowed.
Built-in microwave is not allowed.
Tabletop is allowed, she's a countertop.
I have a tabletop microwave in my house that roasts, cooks, does everything. I mean, I'm only saying because I think that's a great idea.
Right, that's the way around it.
They're going to do something, and they're going to eat here, they're going to cook something.
Well, the whole, I mean, the board of selectmen and the town meeting are looking for ways to increase.
Right, to increase, not to tighten it up.
Not to make it harder for people to do it, but to increase it and make it so that they won't be doing it without permits. That they will be looking to get permits.
They're trying to increase the number of bona fide apartments with kitchens.
What they're trying to do is to keep them from being as they presently are in people's basements and hanging in the garage without any approval. So if they have better ways to define what that is, it's not that they're looking to keep people from doing it, they're looking to get people to do it so that they comply with the Board of Health and they comply with the Building Department for light ventilation, air, all of that other stuff, so.
Sheila, are they going to, if you know, if you don't, to say so? With regard to dormitories, are they going to go and, and answer that same question?
What we did was to approve a use variance. Now, those applicants have to go before the planning board, and I cannot assume what they're going to do. That's a whole other hearing, a whole other set of discussions.
That, that's a can of worms.
Is this?
Somebody else's can of worms.
Is this the, the dormitories?
Yeah. So, anyway, thanks, everybody, that was a very difficult case, but really.
Can I get a motion to close, and then we can talk candidly?
Motion to close the meeting? Second? Second. Meeting close.